Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. Regular session of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence to begin our meeting. And now if you will stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of us all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and the motion would be in order.
So I have a motion in a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item is on our agenda are a number of recognitions and I will call Nancy Carolyn. Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning. I would like to introduce to you Daniel Heath. He is our new sanitation operator. He lives in Manio with his wife and his four children. He worked as a crabber for two years and then he worked for Pepsi for 18. He decided he wanted to do something different, so he applied to the town of NAGS Head. And he says he spends his time with his family.
Oh, very good.
Daniel Heath. Next, I would like to introduce John Bush. He's with Water Distribution. He and his brother moved here in 2020, but before coming here, he spent eight years as a volunteer fireman. He lives with his wife Brittany and his three-month-old daughter and his five-month-old hound-mixed puppy. He spends his spare time enjoying family time, fishing and football. John Bush. Next, I'd like to introduce Josh Givens. He's with Facilities Maintenance. Josh moved here about nine years ago from West Bagi, Virginia. He lives with his family in Kitty Hawk. He has two, three children. He brings to the town years of heavy equipment experience. He enjoys spending time with his family, woodworking, especially he loves hunting and fishing. Josh Givens. Next, I would like to recognize Ray Schoolmaker for 10 years of service with the town. He is our Water Distribution Superintendent. And while with the town, Ray has earned his A Distribution, his C Well, and his Backflow and Cross-Connection certifications. He is also the operator responsible charge for the distribution system. Ray is a hands-on superintendent and is a very patient teacher. He works with contractors and engineers when they have any questions or anything to do about the town's distribution system. Ray can always be counted on to do what is needed for the good of the town, not just in water. He readily assists other departments and divisions and he's always can be counted on to do whatever's asked of him and his crew with a positive and can-do attitude to get the job done. Ray lives in Kitty Hawk with his wife Chelsea and his two daughters, Emery and Lila, and he enjoys offshore fishing. Ray Schoolmaker. Next, I would like to recognize Karen Hagie, Administrative Manager for Public Services for her 15 years of service. Karen came to us from Southern Shores and Southern Shores' loss was Town of NAGS Head's gain. She, from the beginning, Karen has took upon herself to learn all there was to learn about the workings of the Public Works Division. She is the IT person for Public Works and makes herself readily available to assist Public Works employees as well as superintendents by tallying information and designing spreadsheets to make information easier to access and to also is very, very helpful to all the She is the main point, she was the main point of contact between the town and TFC in setting up and maintaining the town's subscription-based recycle program. In the past year, she was a very important role in the update of the traffic control map by re-going out and doing the whole town's sign inventory. Karen lives in Point Harbor with her husband Shane. She enjoys hunting and her two grandchildren, Henry and Elaine. And the last thing that she's doing, well, the most recent thing she's doing is she's moving all of the Public Works K-Drive information onto the town's SharePoint, which is no small feat. That's Karen Hagie. So now for the presentation of the nominee for Public Services?
Yes, we'll move right on now from those recognitions to the presentation of the 2022 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year nominees. And each department head will come up to present that department's nominee for the Employee of the Year. And we are going to start with Nancy, since she's going to stay at the podium to introduce Public Services nominee. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Bruce Erickson. I had put it out for nominees for the Employee of the Year. I got six responses and all six responses was the same person. Bruce takes great pride in his work in Facilities Maintenance and he enjoys his family, his job and his town. I'd like to read you some of the comments that were made to him, about him, from his fellow employees. Bruce is an exceptional employee. He has a deep care for the town, its residents and visitors. He goes the extra mile even on projects that's not assigned to him. During COVID, he was known as the decontamination man, volunteering to work seven days a week to make sure the parks, town hall and facilities were sanitized and fit for all. His supervisor says he can call Bruce to ask him to perform a task and nine times out of 10, it's already been done. Bruce sees it and he takes care of it. Bruce is a shining, this is another comment, a shining example of what public services should represent and without a doubt be nominated for Town of NAGS Head Employee of the Year. Bruce takes ownership of everything he does here in the town. Ownership extends past his normal work hours as he's always taking note of something, even when he's on a joyful bike ride with his family. He can't take, if he can't take care of itself, which is rare, he seeks out that person who can assist and assist with resolving and follow-up to ensure it's been addressed. He takes pride in all he does and Bruce exemplifies the best of what the Town of NAGS Head has to offer. Bruce Erickson.
Bruce, we're going to ask you to, if you will, to start a line over here by standing over there a little bit beside John. And there you go, right there, it's good. Yes, so our next nominee is from Administrative Services and Amy Miller will present their nominee.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My Admin Services would like to nominate Linda Bittner as our Employee of the Year. Linda is our certified tax collector. I'll try to make it brief, but it's hard for me to do that sometimes, but I really feel like she deserves this award just on the merit of her tax collection record for this year. This year, Linda collected every single real estate property tax that had a known owner. She's been our tax collector for eight years. And out of those eight years, four of those years, her tax collection rate was 99.99% or higher. One year it was actually 100%, which she did not collect $196. And again, again, this year she collected every single property tax for real estate that had a known owner. She continues to set the bar higher for herself each year because she knows what she's able to accomplish and she knows what she's already done. The Town of NAGS Head has come to create an expectation for a high tax rate as our badge of honor and again, because of the past eight years of what Linda's been able to accomplish. She's truly dedicated and she operates with a sense of urgency and she takes pride, responsibility, accountability and ownership in her position. Now again, this past year, her tax collection rate was 99.99%. And just to kind of gauge what that means, the average statewide tax collection rate was 98.96%. And municipalities compared to us with the same size, same utilities, offering the same type of services, it was 98.53%. Linda did not collect $881 out of $8,781,194,000. And in the MSD, only $8 was uncollected. So again, just to kind of gauge what that means, from a budgeting perspective, we can budget our tax collection rate based on what it was the prior fiscal year. That's dictated by state statute. So using our current levy compared to what the statewide average collection rate was in other towns within the state, she, we were able to budget over $90,000 more compared to the statewide rate and over $128,000 more compared to the towns our size rate. So that really stretches a dollar and it expands our budgeting capacity. And not only has she maintained these high rates, but the board's aware of these high rates are maintained as the composition and complexity of our tax rates and fees have changed. Since Linda was nominated twice, by the way, this is the third time. Third time's a charm. So since then, we now, we had two MSDs. We now have six MSDs. And this past year, we implemented a tiered fee structure on our tax bills for cart rollback fees. And we've also, Linda's also in charge of our beach driving permits and our business licenses. And this past year, the board's also adjusted our beach driving ordinance with different fee structures. It's been on our website, our tax bill, she designed the tax bills. And clearly Linda's been crucial in messaging these changes and we've sought her input and planning and coordination of these items. Communication, complete accuracy, teamwork where necessary. And with Linda, there is absolutely no gap between the board's intentions and her actions. Again, this is the third time Linda's been nominated because I just feel she really deserves it and I'm not going to stop until she gets. Linda is truly a steward and protector of taxpayer money and town assets. So I would really appreciate your consideration of acknowledging Linda as the 22 Employee of the Year. So, thank you.
All right, so next, our next nominee comes from the Town Clerk's Office and Carolyn Morris will present the nominee.
I am pleased to nominate Kim Thompson, Permit Specialist in the Planning and Development Department for the 2022 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. As Permit Specialist, Kim handles planning walk-ins and phone calls. She's responsible for entering building permit data into Munis. She screens materials for distribution to appropriate staff and assists the public with the completion of permit applications. I have found her to be consistent, dependable and punctual. With her office being located next to the town hall lobby, she is often the first contact anyone has with the town. She is knowledgeable and helpful in a variety of situations on a daily basis. She assists others with questions that may or may not be related to planning and is friendly and personable throughout all her interactions. I have seen and heard her go out of her way to welcome those who walk into town hall and to assist them with their concerns, even if she is in the middle of a task. She recently celebrated 20 years with the town and is and always has been a great ambassador for the Town of NAGS Head.
Our next nominee comes from the Planning and Development Department and Planning Director Kelly Wyatt will present their nominee.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the Earl Murray Jr. 2022 Employee of the Year recognition, the Planning and Development Department would like to nominate Building Inspector III, Steve Semansky. Steve began working for the Planning Department on January 3rd of 2013, so his 10-year recognition is right around the corner. Steve has his Level 3 certifications in Building, Plumbing, Mechanical and Electrical and his Level 2 certification in Fire. He has an unmatched grasp of the North Carolina Building Code and in fact, the Chief Building Inspector Corey Tate, the supervisor, has stated, "Steve knows the North Carolina Building Code better than any inspector I have ever worked with. His knowledge is second to none." So that is quite a compliment. And our second nomination of Steve for this award, I did want to be very transparent about Steve. If you're looking for an employee to go to, to get a warm, fuzzy feeling, it's not going to be Steve. But he's the employee that reports to work early each and every day. He's prepared to receive the first phone call or walk-in customer before most employees, myself included, even pull into the driveway. I will say he's receiving the customer that Kim Thompson has already met at the front He's the employee that works with diligence, efficiency and focus to complete his job duties each day to the highest standard. He's an employee that treats everyone he meets with respect and equity, no matter their standing or status. He administers the building code in the same way. Steve is the employee that communicates to other staff any concerns he may see through his day-to-day travels. He's dependable, trustworthy, takes great pride in his work and in his work ethic. You rarely have to follow up with Steve because he has wonderful follow-through. As a building inspector, Steve doesn't get to have down days, lazy days or off days. Staying inside during foul weather is simply not an option for him because the expectation is that he will be there for the citizens of the town who's doing work. His job is inherently difficult. No one wants to be the person giving someone unwanted or unwelcome news, but to ensure the safety of the structures within the town and compliance of those buildings, it's a necessary reality. It's also important to note that the North Carolina Building Code doesn't have a lot of flexibility, so Steve's not afforded that opportunity. But through all of this, Steve shows up each and every day with consistency. He meets the day with a sunrise photograph, a cup of coffee, a smile, and if we're lucky, he's brought in some of his amazing baked goods. When I did ask the Planning Department if you had, you know, what would you like to say about Steve, it all related to either how delicious his food is, his punctuality or his fishing skills. A couple of the comments we did receive is, "Steve is helpful in my morning guidance, always reminding me to tighten up." And also from the same person, "I'm so glad to call Steve a friend and a mentor." And I think that's pretty consistent among all the employees. Just to wrap up, Steve is punctual, accountable, dedicated, dependable, he's consistent, responsive, and he's adaptable because things are changing quite often within the department. As his supervisor and as a coworker, these are all characteristics and qualities of an employee that I believe elevates him for consideration for the 2022 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. Thank you, Steve.
Our next presentation will come from the Fire Department and Chief Wells.
Good morning, Board and Commissioners. Like you, we had a very tough decision. We solicited input and were given many nominees and one of them stood out. NAGS Head Fire and Ocean Rescue is pleased to nominate Captain Phil Wolf for the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. Captain Wolf is the epitome of self, of service above self. Captain Wolf is an experienced fire officer who never hesitates to go above and beyond what is expected of him. He looks for tasks that are outside of his daily activities regularly. Captain Wolf accepts the challenge with a can-do attitude. Whether a building maintenance project or an apparatus repair project, he analyzes the problem, engineers the design and creates a solution. He is cognizant of the town's needs and seeks ways to improve efficiency. Captain Wolf routinely volunteers to pick up supplies from vendors or deliver fire apparatus outside of the service facilities, mostly on his days off. Phil communicates with his supervisors and duty crews efficiently and effectively. He is respected by his peers and other town employees. Throughout his careers in Portsmouth and NAGS Head, he has proven to be a true public servant at work and work for the community. Putting his service above self, he regularly checks on residents who don't have caregivers to help them. After learning of a need for an in-house CPR instructor, Captain Wolf volunteered to become certified. This benefits not only our department, but any town employee who desires this life-saving certification. Captain Wolf recently assisted firefighters with a training and career succession program, which has led to this firefighter's promotion to lieutenant. This speaks volumes to his dedication to the future of NAGS Head Fire Department. Captain Wolf has managed our department's respiratory protection program for all of our fire staff for numerous years. This involves updating policies, researching, purchasing and maintaining all respiratory protection equipment and establishing and adhering to regular maintenance programs. He's taken interest in the town's safety program and in March, he achieved the 100-hour North Carolina Safety Health Council Manager of Environmental Safety and Health Programs. Try saying that. Captain Wolf has been instrumental in preparing the Fire Department for the upcoming North Carolina Response Ratings Inspection. Captain Wolf is a shining example of our department's values, courage, compassion and commitment. His compassionate leadership, while on display daily, was captured when he and his crew helped a terminally ill cancer patient place her toes in the Atlantic Ocean. The story was captured and displayed around the nation on news and in social media. Phil Wolf's compassion is what makes him a good person and a good leader. And his compassion is what makes him a great employee. There's no task that Captain Wolf is not willing to accept. He takes pride in being an employee of the Town of NAGS Head and I therefore highly recommend Phil Wolf for the 2022 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award.
An hour, last but not least nominee will come from the Police Department and Chief Perry Hale will make the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. And I would like to say we saved the best for last. The Police Department's nomination for the 2022 Earl Murray of the Year Award is Detective Christian Aguirre. Aguirre began his career with NAGS Head in January of 2017 as a patrol officer and quickly led the department with traffic and narcotics enforcement. Because of his motivation and dedication to his profession, Christian was selected to attend a Drug Recognition Expert School. For quite some time thereafter, his schooling, he was the only officer east of Greenville to hold this certification. Detective Aguirre quickly led the state in successful evals for the following year after his certification. In 2021, Christian decided to transition to our detective division and his outstanding performance and exceptional attitude have continued to soar. Aguirre comes to work each day with a high level of work ethic and is a very motivated investigator. He always looks for opportunities to learn and places a high standard on himself to ensure quality cases are presented. His peers have stated Christian has been a vital addition to CID and he helps maintain the teamwork atmosphere. Christian is extremely resourceful and enthusiastic about his job. He promotes relationships of trust and respect when dealing with the public. He is a fine example of what an outstanding employee should be and not only represents our agency's high standards, but excels in meeting the standards and value the town is passionate about. For these reasons, please accept Christian Aguirre as the Police Department's nominee.
And I'd like to ask, after Christian joins that fine group of employees over there, I just want to say what a pleasure it is for the Board every year to go through this process, to see these wonderful employees nominated by their peers and brought forward. It shows the quality of our town workforce, shows the dedication of our people to service to their community. We appreciate them. It is always an incredibly difficult decision to choose one to be the Employee of the Year. It is a great honor to be nominated from your department and we appreciate them. And after one more round of applause, I'm going to ask the Board to come around and take a photograph with this fine group of people. So, thank you. Thank you. If you will bear with me, I will read this for the Board's consideration. Whereas at 11:00 a.m. on November 11th, 1918, after four years of bitter conflict, the world rejoiced and celebrated the signing of an armistice by the Allied Forces and the Federal Republic of Germany for the cessation of World War I. And whereas to remember the sacrifices that people made to ensure that lasting peace, on November 11th, 1919, Woodrow Wilson, the 28th President of the United States proclaimed Day to its original date of November 11. And whereas Veterans Day continues to be observed on November 11 regardless of what day of the week on which it falls. Now therefore be it resolved, the Nags Head Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim and call upon all residents and visitors in the town of Nags Head to observe a moment of silence at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, November 11, 2022, in remembrance of all the veterans who fought to safeguard our heritage and freedom, and to celebrate and proudly display the flag of the United States of America throughout the town of Nags Head on Friday, November 11, 2022, Veterans Day, adopted the second day of November, 2022. Hearing the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order?
Say move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from Woda Cooper Company on a proposed affordable housing project.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, City Town Clerk. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. My name is Danny Blackburn. I'm Senior Vice President with Woda Cooper Companies. I live in Savannah, Georgia, and I have been with Woda Cooper Companies for the past 12 years, and I look after all of our activities in North Carolina. If it does have a presentation, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, if I go through this?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to, again, just start by saying what this proposed development is not. It's not a federal or state or even town of Nags Head development. It's privately owned. It'll be owned by Woda Cooper Companies or an affiliate of that entity. It's not a HUD project. It's not a project that has Section 8 vouchers, so it's not referred to as what normally known as a public housing development. And I'm not standing before you today requesting any financial support from the town of Nags Head, and not requesting any rezoning, but I do know that a moratorium has been placed on this region. So I'd like to do a quick overview of what Woda Cooper Companies are all about, basics on this particular development, and then go through the residence, share with you some information on the recent market study that has been concluded by a third-party market study firm, show you the national site plan, preliminary renderings, and finish us with some pictures of some other developments that we have done in North Carolina. Woda Cooper Companies was formed in 1990, so it's 32-plus years of activity. It is a private company, initially started by Jeff Woda and then David Cooper, hence the name Woda Cooper Companies. A couple of years ago, it was transformed into an employee-owned entity through an employee stock option program. So I'm very proudly a part-owner of the company. Headquarters out of Columbus, Ohio, and I run the Savannah office, our development activities for the southeast. We are a fully integrated company. By that I mean is that we develop, build, and manage all of our properties in 16 different states. We currently own over 400 properties, which represents a management of about 16,000 units, which is, you know, 30,000 residents. So we basically manage the equivalent of a small town or a decent-sized town. We are an industry leader. We are currently ranked 10th in the nation by Affordable Housing Finance Magazine. I would like to mention, though, too, we are long-term owners, and that is that out of the 400-plus properties, we have only actually ever sold one similar property, and that was over 10 years ago. So when we come into a community, we like to stay in that community. We manage our properties, and we own our properties. The proposal we're doing here called Sandaling Commons at Nags Head, we're looking at three different buildings on a 4.7-acre site. The three buildings would be two to three stories spread out over the site. We're looking at 54 different residential units, a mix between 10 one-bedroom, 38 two-bedroom, and six three-bedroom units. And you can see the size of those individual units that have been shown on this slide. We would have for 54 units 111 parking spaces, so we would have all the required parking spaces necessarily onsite for this particular development. As part of our development, we would have six handicap units, and that would include two units for the audio and visual impaired. The total development cost at the moment, we're doing this development in conjunction with a sort of sister development, Sandaling Commons in Manio, and the total development would be, is currently running at $240 million for 100 units. So that equates to about $240,000 of total construction, of total development costs per unit. There would be a management and leasing office, as well as a multipurpose community room, fitness center, laundry facilities. Although even though we have a laundry facility onsite, there would also be washer and dryer hookups in all the units. The exterior amenities would have a playground, top lot, covered picnic area with table and grills. The units themselves would include, of course, a central HVAC system. All the appliances would be Energy Star appliances. In fact, we would comply with Energy Star 2.0 as a program throughout the property. Refrigerator, dishwasher, LVT flooring, we put LVT flooring now to all of our units everywhere. I've talked about the washer and dryer hookups, and what we also do in North Carolina is we have 16 square foot of additional storage space that would be available for each unit. This is the split that we've got in terms of targeted residents. You can see on the left what's referred to as the AMI. Those are people earning up to 40% of the area median income, and the area median income is that of Deere County. Up to 40%, 60%, 80%. And you can see on the right side, we've got the number of those units, 17 for 40%, 19 for 60%, and 18 for 80%. And those are just some examples of what those rates are currently. Those are the rates we have at the moment. They do fluctuate. They can go up or down based on the allowed market rate, based on the allowed rents in the market. HUD determines the max rents that you can apply, and that's the only involvement of HUD in this project, is to actually determine the maximum rents that we could apply in a specific development. So these are the rents we've got here. So for example, a 60% two-bedroom would be 936 per month, et cetera. So what are these income levels? These are the current income levels that are in place. I've given you the 40, 60, and 80% categories, because that's what we're going to have in this particular development. And you can see it goes by the number of people in that particular household. So if I go for a 4% person household, would have a max rental income to live in a 60% unit would be $47,340. To live in an 80% unit would be $63,120. So the way this system works is you have, for different levels of income, you have different rents that people would pay. The units themselves would all be exactly the same. There'd be no change. It's not like we're building a 40% building and a 60% building and an 80% building. And it goes up, as you can see, on the 80 side, it goes up, the highest amount would be $73,000 for a family with four children. So typically, this applies to what's referred to as workforce or essential housing. It's very often teachers, school support staff, hospital staff. It's not the president or any of the major surgeons at any hospital, but it's a lot of hospital staff that would live in such a building, starting police officers, firefighters, local government employees. And of course, in this particular community, I'd like to highlight, of course, the whole hospitality industry that is a very dominant part of your economy. I also like to mention that seniors can also live in this property. It's not that it is totally, it's what's referred to as general occupancy. In other words, there's no age restriction. Anybody can live there if they comply with the rental max. And a lot of seniors, we find a lot of seniors do move into our properties, even if it's just for workforce, because they're moving from an income-based salary to a fixed income. And they often really comply with the terms and are able to live in our properties. Just received back a market study that was issued by Fox Strategic Insights. This market study was actually ordered by North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and so it's a third party. We could not even choose the market company that they actually selected. And I just want to highlight just a few points that came out of that report, which is dated October 25. For instance, we conducted an onsite survey of nine rental housing properties totaling 356 units during our in-person survey in October 22, and these units are fully occupied. You've got the list of those properties there, but a total amount of 356 units, zero vacancy. And they concluded this indicates a pent-up demand in the region for additional non-subsidized affordable housing. Another comment they made is considering the anticipated quality and well-appointed units proposed for this site, the adequate unit sizes, and the ample depth of the market, all proposed rents are considered achievable. They went on to say that the proposed rents are 41% to 93% of the achievable market rents, and they should represent adequate-to exception values for the local market. For instance, a 60% AMI, tax credit rents are set at 10% or more below market rents, and are proposed 60% market revenues, representing an advantage over the market rents of 32%. So you can definitely see it's a definite advantage for those living in these units. Another interesting comment I'd just like to share with you is that they said that in the site primary market area, which is Deere County, it is estimated that in 2024, 1,830 through renter households will have eligible incomes to reside in a tax credit project. So you can just see the huge demand and growing demand, because it actually went on to say, you know, the Nags Head site PMA has experienced household growth, and this growth is projected to continue through at least 2024. Pent-up demand exists for tax credit rental housing, evidenced by the full occupancy and waiting lists of all existing tax rental housing choices in the PMA primary market area, as well as the out-of-market regional comparables. They actually went further out to look at different properties in Elizabeth City and beyond, because there's just not that amount of availability in the market. They concluded, it's our opinion the market exists for the 54 units proposed in the subject site. So here is the site. This is our preliminary site plan that we have, and we have submitted that to the Planning Department and would go through with the Planning Department. I don't necessarily want to go through all proposals. We've got the two buildings here and the third one here. I think there could be some changes to this. I'd like to maybe move this building here to the other side, for instance, make it along, have all the buildings along the actual highway, and keep a space, an area of space between the homes to the east. So the whole process is with this, this goes through a special use permit process, and you'd go through that, and you'd work with the Planning Department to go through the different actual site layout, as well as the actual renderings. Here's just a rendering of what we've been working with, for instance. We don't have one-size-fits-all. We try and make things that are adaptable to the area in which we are located. This would be another, this is just another set of colors playing on. This would be the largest building if you went with 24 units in one building. Just like to finish with, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, just a minute, just to show some pictures of some other properties, if that's okay with you. This is what we did in Rocky Mall. This was a townhome configuration. We had a lot more space to work with. The city actually provided us the whole 15 acres of the land to work with. This is another development called Rivagate Green downtown Charlotte. As you can see, a much more sort of urban feel to it. There you can see the sort of the appointment of the kitchens, and that's the LVT flooring that I mentioned before. Tulley Place is in Elizabeth City. That was our first development ever in North Carolina, and that was an actual senior housing development, 55 years and above. Another one is Old Fire Towel Place in Greenville, and we've done, we just finished another one in Harbor Meadows in Calabash that leased up in just weeks. This is the last slide I have. This is just a list of the different properties that we have in North Carolina, and I'd love, welcome the opportunity to arrange for a visit, or if anybody would like to visit one of these sites, we'd love to show you, allow you to meet the community as well. That's it.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Appreciate that. There are obviously a number of things in your presentation that the town does not regulate. We certainly would address site plan issues, but the actual operation rental rates, you know, appreciate that information being presented to the public. That's, just so that the public understands, it's not anything that's how Nags Head regulates. I want to ask Board members if they have questions or observations at this point.
Mr. Blackburn, have you seen the white paper our staff provided us?
I may have seen a draft, but not this.
Can I have it shown?
Yes. Can we?
Can you put the white paper up?
No, I've not seen this.
Based on what we've received, there's not a lot of workforce housing in this, and the way the county came in so adamantly describing it, it was workforce housing, that we were not adjusted-income housing or capped-out housing. It's very difficult on this beach for a family of four to have one person work, and hopefully you have two kids staying at home and the wife staying at home. Most of the time, the wife or the husband, they want to work too. They want to feel some self-worth. So my question to you, I would like you to have the opportunity to read that and tell me if you feel this is sustainable, because I can tell you, with our town, I don't think we, I think Andy said, we might have one new employee that may qualify for this, and that's not going into their history if they have kids or not kids, or maybe it was. But I know our police department, can you tell us what they start at?
$50,000, 518.
Starting employee as an individual. So yes, if they had a newborn, a wife, maybe they would qualify based on what you're talking about. So my understanding as just a person, this is supposed to be for workforce housing, and the way you've subscribed it in your Elizabeth City property is mostly senior housing. Nothing against seniors, but that doesn't, especially since reading through your contract, you won't be paying taxes on the property of this. And with that, that becomes a burden to the 4.5 million dollars worth of taxes that you're putting that right in the middle of. You're going to decrease that value because you don't pay property taxes? So my concern over how you're operating your business is who makes money on $24 million to build those 100 units when I can build a single-family house for $265,000? So I mean... housing. It's very difficult on this beach for a family of four to have one person work, and hopefully you have two kids staying at home and the wife staying at home. Most of the time, the wife or the husband, they want to work too. They want to feel some self-worth. So my question to you, I would like you to have the opportunity to read that and tell me if you feel this is sustainable, because I can tell you, with our town, I don't think we, I think Andy said, we might have one new employee that may qualify for this. And that's not going into their history if they have kids or not kids, or maybe it was. But I know our police department, can you tell us what they start at?
Fifty thousand five hundred eighty.
Starting employee as an individual. So yes, if they had a newborn, a wife, maybe they would qualify based on what you're talking about. So my understanding as just a person, this is supposed to be for workforce housing. And the way you've subscribed it in your Elizabeth City property is mostly senior housing. Nothing against seniors. But that doesn't, especially since reading through your contract, you won't be paying taxes on the property of this. And with that, that becomes a burden to the four point, I think it's forty-five million dollars worth of taxes that you're putting that right in the middle of. You're going to decrease that value because you don't pay property taxes? So my concern over how you're operating your business is, who makes money on twenty-four million dollars to build those hundred units when I can build a single-family house for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars?
Okay.
So I mean, that's my question from an individual looking at it. It has no determination how you run your business. It must be very profitable. My other question would be, in your contract, Exhibit B, you have a ground lease. And you said you own them all. You might own a building, but you're leasing the property from, in this case, Dare County. And you're paying them money back based on a certain preset determination. How does that benefit NAGSAD? How does that benefit our workforce? And that would be questions I would ask you and Dare County.
Right. Well, first of all, I would love to get a copy of this and respond formally
It's public. It's on our website.
Formally to the data that's in it. The actual lease situation with Dare County is that they are providing nine million dollars in total for the development of the hundred units. And as part of that, they are maintaining the actual, the land itself through ground leases, so that they can absolutely make sure that it remains affordable housing throughout the term of the lease. The, what we do in situations like that, we would sit down with the town of NAGSAD and work out a pilot, which in other words, is a payment in lieu of taxes. We understand we're coming in for services, and we would sit down and we would establish an agreement, like we do in many other different towns, as to what we should be paying in terms of a fee to contribute to the services that we are receiving from the city. That's how that works. The way we, the way we work, receive funding, benefits is we actually get a developer fee on this, and that is totally disclosed what that developer fee would be. It would be, it's a certain amount per unit that North Carolina Housing Finance would allow us to get. And then the cash flow going forward, there's very little cash flow in this type of development, because the rents are so low.
Your contract says it's somewhere around twenty-five thousand a month, and anything over that, you would pay a portion back to the county?
So that's...
I'd have to find which page it's on, but in this, it states how much you're making per unit. If it's at a ninety percent occupancy, then anything over that goes back to the county.
I can't respond to that. So I don't recognize the figures you're throwing at me. We're not gonna...
No, I'm not arguing. I'm just asking questions, because I want a better understanding. And I'm sure there are people in the community that want a better understanding of how this is going to work and how this is going to help our restaurants, our first responders, and our workers in this area. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
During your presentation last, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
I said that I was for affordable housing, but let's be transparent. The county said, both of their representatives said, let's work together, NAGSAD, to do this. Each of them said they'd been working on it for three years. Do you know the first time we heard from them? Two weeks ago. And I'm not aware of any of the other colleagues working with the county. So I'm talking about transparency. Do you have any idea, do you recall when your contract was signed for that piece of property?
For the piece of property that we're looking at?
Correct.
Yes, it was signed, I think, in January 2021. It's January 2022, because we submitted it this year to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency.
So eleven months ago?
Correct, sir.
Any reason why the news articles referenced the Bowser Towne site and an undisclosed site in NAGSAD? Why? If you had the contract.
We were not, we never hid that fact that it was this site, sir.
Who did it, then? Do you know?
I don't know. Who decided not to disclose it?
Yeah. I mean, that's just, see what I'm saying about transparency? It's just concerning to me.
We haven't been, we haven't been working with, we haven't been working with Dare County for three years, sir. We...
Well, no, no, I didn't. I said they've been working on it.
Right, right.
Okay.
The first time I came into Dare County was upon invitation from the Outer Banks Hospice. I met with Amy Montgomery and some other folks, and they had a problem because they didn't have enough affordable housing, workforce housing. That was the first time I came into the market. We looked at different properties, and we looked at different properties that were zoned appropriately. And we came across this property through discussions with local brokers. We found this property and put it under contract.
It's just, you understand transparency. It's concerning to me when I have citizens asking me, undisclosed site in NAGSAD?
Right.
That doesn't even pass the smell test, in my opinion. But anyway, let's move on. Real quick, you said, starting police officers and firefighters. You already know about NAGSAD. Our lowest-paid police officer coming in with no experience.
Okay.
Over fifty thousand five hundred, they wouldn't qualify. Can you tell me who else wouldn't qualify? Kilt of Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, and Duck. Their starting salaries are above the eighty percent AMI. Who would qualify? The town of Manio. Their starting salary is within three hundred and eighty-six dollars of the eighty percent AMI. Okay? So their cost of living raise are within grade increase of being priced out. Dare County Sheriff's Office, their starting salary, almost three thousand dollars below the eighty percent AMI. So three thousand dollars. They're doing a pay study, and the presentation will be made to the board next Monday. So depending on what they do with their starting salaries, you may have deputies not even qualifying. To be transparent, detention officers are well below that, so they could quite honestly qualify. EMT paramedic, nope, they'll qualify. Forty-seven thousand seven fifty-four. So again, when we talk about, both of the representatives from the county, both mentioned, police officers and firefighters. The chairman even turned around and looked at the gentleman over there who's our police chief and said, are we going to turn our back on him? No. The town has not. So when we're talking about this, let's be transparent about it. Much like our mayor pro temp said, people want to work. I mean, sixty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, you mentioned Darren last meeting, and you clarified it this time. That's for a family of four.
Correct.
So if you had two schoolteachers, starting salary forty-one thousand dollars with a bachelor's degree after state supplement.
Right.
Two schoolteachers couldn't live there.
Right, right.
I mean, be transparent about it. The transparency is not there. Our citizens, they're thinking that we're turning our back on affordable housing, and that's not the case. And I'll close with this. You said at last meeting and you said this meeting, quite a few seniors. I'm offering, seniors need a place to stay too. But how's that going to help our workforce housing? It's not.
Fair enough, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
Well, I can't say much more than the other two commissioners have already stated. I mean, if you look at your report on page number six, it shows that if you're trying to help teachers along with other workforce housing, that not many of the, if you bring up page six, I mean, you'll look at the, only the first three categories, only the first three categories would be eligible, and that's for the eighty percent. That's not even for the sixty or the forty percent. So I mean, to echo what they have said, if you're trying to help workforce housing and our teachers, I mean, there's not even that much that, not that much that'll even help them out either. So I think transparency, like you stated, is key to this. And that's really all I have to say about it.
What I'd like to, I have not seen a copy of this report, so I would like to take this copy of the report and respond to it formally, if you'll allow me to do that, sir.
Oh, sure. Of course. We would appreciate that.
Could you talk a little bit about how you determine the composition of the number of units dedicated to each category of AMI?
The tax credit program is based on having an average of sixty percent AMI. So what we do is we go down to forty and we go up to eighty. So that's how it's determined. The tax credit program is a federal tax credit program that works throughout the whole of the country. Each state receives a certain amount of tax credits. In North Carolina, it's the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency that receives these credits. And we are applying here through what's referred to as a four percent tax credit application. It means we get less credits, but it's not a competitive application process, because Dare County does not score well in the current scoring structure that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency has. So in the four percent, we need some additional funding, and that's where Dare County has come in to provide the gap funding. So the deciding of, you know, the forty, sixty, eighty is something that we do, but it's new. We can now go up to eighty percent. Before, it was only at sixty percent. This income averaging is a new way of doing it that's been in place. So I'd say, I'd say three years, three or four years.
Can you talk a little bit about how the AMI is determined?
The AMI is determined based on the actual, it's the area median income level. That's based from the data that's collected on a national basis. And then every year, the rates are amended and changed. They come out, and Novo Gradak is the company that has the, is the best-known entity for providing that source. They manage that, the distribution of that information.
Okay. Thank you.
So if household incomes do go up, that AMI level will go up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. That brings us to public comment, and I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board welcomes members of the public to provide public comment to the Board of Commissioners. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment, but it is an opportunity for members of the public to share their thoughts and concerns about matters that they wish to address to the board. I will say that we have three public hearings on the agenda for today, and if you're here to provide comment regarding those public hearings, you should wait until we call for that public hearing to provide your comment. But if you wish to address the board at this time, we ask that you please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the Board of Commissioners.
David Bragg, NAGSAD. In talking to, Mr. Blackburn talked about he didn't have any reason not to disclose it. Well, I happened to watch the video, and we had Commissioner Woodard come in here and say, where are all the people if they oppose this? Well, I could tell you where all the people are. I talked to a lot of people this weekend at the oyster roast over at Mimi's Tiki Hut, and we have a lot of opposition. So I'll bring people if you need people here, because this is crap. Because when you look at this, page three of the report, he talked about it's not going to cost us anything. Well, according to this, it says Woodard Cooper would manage the property and lease the units. The LIHTC program would require Woodard Cooper to operate the facility for a specific period of time. The land would be owned by Dare County, and Wood Cooper would be charged a ground lease to operate, they forgot "to" in there, and they would be tax-exempt. What is that doing for us? Nothing. Secondly, we've got the Board of Education that owns property in Manio that they're running, they have trailers on it. That's in direct violation of SS 6658, a state law that they should be following. Current Board of Directors, or current Board of Education and Board of Commissioners seem not to want to follow that. What I have a suggestion, Mr. Woodard said, if not here, then where? No problem. I've got the perfect location. Manio, 803 Bernice Ave, five point five acres of land for two hundred and eighty-three thousand, saving Dare County three point three million. I think we could do that. There's a little thing called eminent domain, which for the good of the town, or city, or county, we could foreclose on that property and then have Mr. Blackburn and associates build all in Manio, and then maybe he could find the sheriffs and the Manio police that would be able to qualify to stay there. Thirdly, when we talk about schools, well, we have the most, the best-paid teachers in the state. So with their benefits, and this is 2017-18, they're at fifty-seven thousand three sixty-nine. So how do you figure wages? Wages include benefits. So the numbers that he puts on that sheet are fictitious. So by the time we get everything said and done, we're going to have a big issue, because the people that are staying there are not the people that he talks about staying there. I'd like to throw the Board of Education under the bus, too, because Mr. Twitty talked about, we can't get people to come here. Well, how about the Board of Education worry about retention? Because right now, seventeen of the schoolteachers that left Dare County for other places, the big items were not homes, or being able to live here affordably. Number one was, needless to say, not to throw them under the bus too much, Board of Education and superintendent. We got rid of the superintendent. We're working on new people on the Board of Education. Second thing was lack of facilities. Okay, I could agree with that somewhat. And the other was compensation. So if the Board of Commissioners are so worried about these people having someplace to live, why don't they increase the salary in Dare County? Then we would have less of an issue. Additionally, I lived in New Orleans, and I lived in Miami, and I worked in DC quite a bit. What happened to park and ride? What happened to public transportation? Let's get that going. We don't have to build this public housing, or low-income housing, whatever you'd like to call it. We have the option of doing other things. The federal government, state government, and local government should not have to provide housing to people. If you want to live in paradise, then you have to pay for it. If you have to get a second or third job, that's what you do. You get a roommate. That's what I had to do when I moved to Miami. So I don't see this as, hey, let's build this so we could keep people. As I just learned today, we have three new employees here. Where are they living? We were told where they were living, right here. So how are they living? Apparently, we're paying them enough, or they have a spouse that works, or they have a roommate. It's a very simple equation. The people that are going to end up living here, we're going to have issues. Home prices go down an average of three percent when you build this low-income housing. Police interaction goes up. So I don't think we need that. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Shelley Blackstone, and I own a property since 2007 between Combs Streets and Halliwell. I love NAGSAD. I love being part of this community. I was especially excited this morning to meet Ann Cabalbaum when I walked in here, who's the daughter of the late Carolista Baum, which probably everybody knows was the woman who stood in front of a bulldozer to save Jockeys Ridge. I just think that we are, I agree with some of the other comments, so I'm glad, that we're solving the wrong problem here. We're not even solving workforce housing. But also, this property right there does not make, that property right now is just pure forest, and it's behind single-family homes, and it's all surrounded by single-family homes, and some urban-style development just doesn't make any sense right there, right now. All it's going to do, like if you think about that population right there, there's nineteen homes right there in that block, if you want to call it that. And in the summertime, there's probably about two hundred people there for three months. Right now, on November 2nd, there's like twenty people there. So for eight or nine months out of the year, there's like twenty people there. We're not taxing the town of NAGSAD's services. So if you build this property, which is three sixty-five days a year, twenty-four seven, with two or three hundred people in it, during the high season, there'll be five hundred people on this block. And this is like a little, small-town block. This is not a city. This just doesn't make any sense to me to transform the whole area like this. So like, there are other places that are more appropriate reasons to build this housing. I think that what we need to do is we just need to slow down. I mean, as a community, we can solve these... I mean, as a community, we can solve these problems, including the owners of these vacation rentals. It's, it's like the school year, for example, is, aligns with the off-season. People could rent rooms if there's that need. We could get on the, the property owners could work directly with the school system to get people off these waiting lists. It might, there might even be some kind of, and I'm just spitballing here, but there might even be just some kind of tax incentive to take your property occasionally, once every five years, once every 10 years, off, off your vacation property, off vacation rental for a year. You know, there's, there's things we can do if we come together as a community. And I think maybe this is just a wake-up call because, it's like ironically, I wrote my letter that's, you know, hopefully going to be posted, which has some of the details that support some of the other things that people have said on Halloween. So this is, this is kind of like, you know, a horror story. Like nobody ever in their wildest dreams ever imagined that this, this would be the use case for that piece of land that's now a forest. So maybe that's a wake-up call for all of the vacation owners, you know, the property owners who have vacation rentals, including myself. And I consider myself part of this community. I've had my house in 2007, to, to, to work with different organizations and to work with the town to help solve this problem and do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackstone. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Morning. My name is Michael Bryan, live in Nagseth, North Carolina. I'm here as chairman of the Friends of Jockeys Ridge. And unlike Jockeys Ridge, when I go there, my blood pressure drops 10 points. I find these meetings very stressful. I'm not sure how you do it. Transparency. Like an email you may regret sending, all I will say is, please read the NC Policy Watch article that was published this morning. What I really came here to say is, from the Friends of Jockeys Ridge board, I just want to say thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Morning, everyone. What kind of heavy meeting, I feel like I should start with tell some jokes or something. Been slined up here a little bit. My name is Steve Falls. My first business here in the Outer Banks was in 1994. Property owner here, and currently one of the partners of Farm Dog Beach Services. And I'm here this morning because on the agenda today, we're going to talk about some of the rules and regulations for concierge beach services. And since our business does that extensively, you know, we're here this morning to be part of the discussion. A couple of quick things for those of you who don't, don't know who we are. Farm Dog was, was established in 2009 by Rowan Farmer. My other business partner is Aaron West. We set up cabanas and umbrellas, shade structures for tourists on the beach, and we, we rent equipment and we, and we do surf lessons. In the height of summer, we employ about 20 employees, and we have a location here in Nagseth. I came to work for the company about four years ago. And when I came to work for the company, my thought was, oh, cabanas, that's for, that's for people with a lot of money who just don't want to carry their stuff to the beach. And to be honest with you, I couldn't have been more wrong. As it turns out, the folks that, that use our business are primarily folks who have families, little kids. They've got grandparents who have a tough time getting to the beach. They have family members with immobilization issues. And they want to go enjoy themselves at the beach. And what I found was, is that people come to us every week in summer, and they go, "Oh, my God, you guys are a lifesaver. Our grandparents can now go play all day long with our kids on the beach. You're amazing." And I'm actually quite proud of the things that we do because I feel like in a lot of ways, the cabanas are new umbrella, and we're part of the process that, that makes the Outer Banks beach experience all that much better. It keeps tourists coming back here year after year because now Grandma and Grandpa, or folks who have mobility issues, can play with their kids all day on the beach, where before that was a real challenge. So a little bit of context for us as we start this, this discussion. Cabanas, as you may have noticed, kind of the new umbrellas. And there's a really good reason for that. One, they've become easier to use and set up and all that good stuff. There's commercial operations like us that help people, help people with it. But also because they're simply, for the most part, if you've got a family, and we've become all that much more family-oriented because we now have a bunch bigger houses, less motels. If you're a family unit, the cabana itself really works better for you than umbrella. So I want to point out to the board, as we talk about this, that when you go out to the beach on any given summer day, and you look down the beach and you see all the shade structures, if you do a count, and I actually did this summer because I was curious, about 85% of the things that you're looking at are not from commercial operators. They're from private folks that bought their cabana in Walmart or Dick's Sporting Goods or where else, and they've set up on the beach. And there are zero regulations in any way, shape, or form for those folks. So as we consider some of the challenges and things that need to be done around this, I just want to have everybody keep that peace in mind. Let's see here. Also wanted to put out that myself and my business partners, we're here for you today, as well as anytime after this meeting, to talk about this. Several board members run businesses, and those of you who are entrepreneurs know that what the public's impression is of how a business is run and what it takes to run that business is often very different from the reality of what it takes to run a business. So we're here for you today, we're here for you after the meeting today, and you can call us anytime after the discussion is, if you want some details on sort of how this business runs, both for us and for the other commercial operators here on the beach.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm losing my voice, so hopefully it'll last through this. My name is Susie Walters. I live at 415 Raceway Court. I've lived here for 40 years, since 1983. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here as I am dismayed and disheartened by recent events regarding the Regala Foundation on which I serve as a board member. The foundation was formed almost 30 years ago with one of the primary purposes of funding a museum to honor Francis Regalo and his significant contributions to flight. John Harris did so out of love, respect, and admiration for Mr. and Mrs. Regalo. Mr. Regalo holds many patents related to flight. What a wonderful educational and inspirational experience a museum would provide our students, community, and visitors. It would only enhance the most visited state park in North Carolina. I would like to correct some of the misinformation being spread by multiple sources. The foundation began discussions with the state of North Carolina in 2017 regarding a museum. It was suggested by the state that Mr. Harris contact Evoque Studios to design the building. This is the same company that is renovating the current Jockeys Ridge Visitor Center. Mr. Harris was also asked to draw up a memorandum of understanding for review. He did so by utilizing state and national examples. The first draft was presented to park staff for review, and recommendations were incorporated in the second draft. Mr. Beddoes and Mr. Weaver, both board members of the Regala Foundation, made a presentation to the Friends of Jockeys Ridge to include the rendering of the museum by Evoque Studios in early 2019. This exact date can be gleaned from the park superintendent as she was present. Evoque Studios looked at three potential sites inside Jockeys Ridge State Park and chose the site just east of the visitor's center as the best location. Then COVID happened, which delayed everything. This was supposed to be a process of some length, with the state doing their due diligence during the negotiations. In an effort to keep the community informed and to be transparent, the Regala Foundation made presentations to the Dare County Commissioners, the Dare County Tourism Board, and you. More presentations were planned for various organizations in the future. However, all of that was short-circuited by the spread of misinformation from various sources. To correct just a few of those misstatements, no members of the Regala Foundation board are in real, are in the real estate business. I'm sure Commissioner Sears is aware of this and is selling real estate now frowned upon. The Regala Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. No outside private entities will be allowed to operate a business within a museum. The Regala Foundation's current president is John Harris, a Dare County businessman of nearly 50 years. His businesses have enhanced opportunities for our citizens and visitors alike and contributed greatly to our economy, including that of Jockeys Ridge State Park. Many people in business wear multiple hats, just like you. The false statements have attacked the character and integrity of every member of our board, with some being called by name. It is alarming. Equally alarming is the letter you sent to Deputy Director Strong stating your opposition. This item was not on your agenda on October 20th. It was brought up during the commissioner's agenda, which is your right. However, prior, prior to writing this letter, neither you nor any of your staff contacted any member of the Regala Foundation to ask questions, nor did you contact Mr. Strong at the state of North Carolina to glean information regarding the process. Yet you state a lack of public input on behalf of the Regala Foundation as one of your reasons for the latter. The town manager attended the meeting with Mr. Strong and the Friends of Jockeys Ridge, yet did not attend the meeting with Mr. Strong and the Regala Foundation. It appears no research was done to glean information except from one source. It is clear that several news sites have either made up information or have utilized false statements by others as a basis of their articles. The Coastal Review has provided the most accurate article to date. The integrity of any organization is only as good as that of its board. Truth matters, facts matter, and it is incumbent upon each of us to research information before making decisions and taking actions that affect so many. Therefore, I ask that you rescind your letter to Mr. Strong. I also ask that you not pass the resolution on today's agenda opposing the Regala Museum without gathering the facts so you can make an informed decision. Thank you for your time today, and thank you for your service to our community. I ask that my statement be included in its entirety in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Mayor Coon and Nagseth Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. First of all, I want to address the comment on the NC Policy Watch.
I'm sorry, if you, just, just for the, for the public, if you could make sure you state your name, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm John Harris. I'm here with the Regala Foundation.
Thank you.
The Policy Watch headline that I pulled up says, "Behind the Scenes, Regala Foundation Scrambled For Legislative Support For Ill-Fated Museum At Jockeys Ridge." What happened is that the, we were told by NC Parks that there wasn't a provision for a long-term lease, to write a long-term lease. And so I went to Senator Sanderson and asked him if he could fix that, basically create legislation that allowed state parks to write long-term leases. And in, in his research into the matter, he found that in fact, North Carolina parks could write long-term leases. So it all went away, essentially, and that's what happened. Let's see. If, it's disappointing to me that it appears that this time the museum won't be built near where over 50 years of flying history and Regalo history have taken place. It's good that the community leaders that helped create the Wright Brothers National Memorial did not receive the same reception. Otherwise, we might not have Wright Brothers Museum there today. It's unfortunate that our community may possibly miss out on an enhancement that could inspire and educate our children and school children from across the state of North Carolina to visit in activity buses every year, as you know. The Regala Museum will be inspirational and educational. Since wing design is scientific, it offers the opportunity for STEM education. It's unfortunate the Town of Nagseth and North Carolina State Parks and the Friends of Jockeys Ridge did not take the time to understand the proposed museum and let it go through the state process. In going through that process, it would have assured that no environmental or financial harm would come to the park and that it is in harmony with North Carolina Parks and Friends of Jockeys Ridge State Park missions. It does fit the mission of North Carolina State Parks, which part of it is to educate. I spent the early part of my career in the park daily. I learned to fly there in 1973 and started teaching there in the spring of 1974, became, before it became a state park. Led by Carolista Baum, George Crocker, Eddie Green, Marlene Roberts, and Charles Evans, as I recall, Jockeys Ridge became a state park in 1975 with the support of the community, the Regalos, Ralph Buxton, and me. My point is, I love Jockeys Ridge State Park. I basically grew up there. I do not want to see any environmental harm come to the park. The Regala Foundation's intent is to do something good for the community and tell the Regalos inspiring story. I would like to address the town letter written to Brian Strong, Deputy Director, North Carolina State Parks, dated October 20th, 2022. First of all, the town did not get any input from the Regala Foundation for this letter. I don't know where the town received the information, but most of it was wrong. The first bullet point says, "A project will have impacts to the natural and recreational resources in the park." It's not included in the current master plan or other planning documents, and it is inconsistent with the mission of the park. In response to that, the impacts to natural and recreational resources would be minimal. Otherwise, how could the current visitor's center have been expanded recently in the same area where the museum was proposed? So if, you know, if environmental considerations are an issue for the museum, then they would have been an issue for the expanded visitor's center. The proposed location was just east of the visitor's center, adjacent to the eastern parking lot. It is true that is not in the current master plan, but that would be reviewed by state parks as we move forward through the process, through the vetting process. It is consistent in North Carolina Park's mission, part of which is to educate. Deputy Director Strong stated that a museum was consistent with North Carolina Park's mission. Grandfather Mountain has a museum. Grandfather Mountain State Park has a museum.
Mr. Harris, that's, that's five minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
Okay. There is a distinct lack of information disseminated about proposed project, the proposed project and lack of public input. That is exactly why the Regala Foundation made a presentation to the county, the Dare County Tourism Bureau, and the Town of Nagseth. Our goal was to communicate the why of the museum and the concept we had to date and to build support for the museum by being completely transparent. We asked to make a presentation to Friends of Jockeys Ridge on October 17th, but have had no response. We will continue to make more presentations in the future to educate the public about the project and be transparent. The...
Thank you, Mr. Harris. That's, that's been six minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Tom Hadden. I've lived in the town since 1974. And I have a long history with hang gliding in Jockeys Ridge. And I'm mostly here this morning to talk about Francis and Gertrude Regalo. In all the political maneuverings to get this museum built, I think sometimes we forget about the stature of these. about the stature of these folks. Everybody knows who they are, but I wonder if you realize the importance of their achievement? You know, for thousands of years, people dreamed of, of flying. The Wright Brothers came along, and with their genius, they made that dream a reality. But that form of aviation quickly became commercialized, militarized, and became unaffordable, really, for most folks. Even today, in general aviation, it takes three or four people banding together to own an airplane in order to fly. So, so the dream of Francis and Gertrude Regalo was to make flight affordable and accessible for everybody, and they actually achieved that. When I first came down here to the Outer Banks, I was nineteen years old, and at that time, I was able to buy a hang glider for $550, my own money. It was part of my college fund that I'd earned during the summer, but this, this was something that you could fold up, it weighed fifty pounds, you could carry it on your shoulder, you could walk up a hill, you could go up a mountain. In fifteen minutes, you could put this thing together, attach yourself to it, and be airable. And after acquiring enough skills, you could stay aloft in a hang glider for hours, fly thirty, forty, fifty miles, which I often did, in the same thermals where hawks and eagles were flying beside me. This is astounding. It's amazing. This had never existed before. So when we're talking about low-speed aerodynamics, Francis and Gertrude Regalo belong in the same conversation with the Wright Brothers, other aviation luminaries like Octave Chanute, Otto Lilienthal. That's the true stature of these folks, and they lived right here with us for many years. Often I would see, we called him Rog, that was his nickname, often I would see Rog out on the sand dunes. He had a red and white hang glider. He was out there flying that glider till he was nearly eighty years old, and it was truly inspirational. The point is, Jockeys Ridge State Park is the proper place to honor these folks. There's been tens of thousands of hang glider flights from there. More people have learned to fly a hang glider at Jockeys Ridge State Park than anywhere in the world. Right down the road, we have the Wright Brothers National Memorial, which honors the Wright Brothers. This is the birthplace of aviation. Jockeys Ridge State Park is the proper place to honor these folks. Imagine families that can come there, they could learn about the Regalos, low-speed flight, their, their concept of the flex wing was the precursor to hang gliders, ultralights, paragliders, kiteboarding, all of those things. But you could walk there at that place, at the park, and learn about this, and then be able to walk right out and see that very thing in action. Tremendous educational opportunity. John alluded to the scientific nature of this. This is a classic example of seeing principles of aviation developed in Dr. Regalo's research with the flex wing and the practical applications that were applied through scientific means that led to all these other wonderful things that came about from that. So, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Hadden.
I had not planned to speak this morning, but I think that it is what needs to be done. My name is Ann Kabelbaum. I am a property owner here in Naxhead, and my mother was Carol Stabam, who in 1973 stood in front of bulldozers to make sure that Jockeys Ridge was not flattened. I have sent to Mr. Gorman a petition that was started after the last board meeting with over twenty-six hundred names in opposition to the Regalo Museum being built on Jockeys Ridge State Park. I also would like to let everyone know that there is no true opposition to the museum itself. It's only to the physical location being on Jockeys Ridge. The Regalos are amazing people. We, in this community, are spoiled to have had them live here and all of the inves, uh, inventions that went on, but Jockeys Ridge is a natural resource. It is not a location for a private museum to be built. It is not the location for anything to be built, excepting a location through a lease at no cost from the state. And the maneuverings that have gone on through officials and Mr. Harris and the Regalo Foundation have not been transparent. They do date back many years, and it was only the Dare County Commissioner meeting in September, I believe, sixth, that it was brought to light that this development project was moving forward. I would like to say again that no one is against the museum, truly. It is a great idea. However, its location on Jockeys Ridge State Park is not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baum.
My name is Duke Garrity. I am the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Home Builders Association. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank you for inviting Wota Cooper today to come here to give us a presentation. You said in a few months you wanted to get some things out in the open, and there was no information. There was a lot of information was given. I want to let you know upfront, the Outer Banks Home Builders supports this project. We don't know where. Is this a perfect spot for it? Is it a good spot? I don't know. Is there a perfect spot that we could put multifamily housing? There's a desperate need, and somebody said, "Well, why are we rushing into this? I've lived here for thirty years, and we've never rushed into it." We're still talking about the same thing. We have to have an availability for our workforce, for entry-level housing that they could live in. We have to find a place for a single mother to raise her children, someplace that's clean and safe, and we don't have that. We pack up some people. You're all business people, I know. How are you making out in your businesses finding employees? I see waiters and waitresses packing into mobile homes on Collington Road, just finding out the roof over their heads. And I'll be a little selfish to it. Members of our association, and it's not just builders, builders make up maybe twenty-five percent of our association. We have associates, banks, mortgage companies, suppliers. I hear people say, "Well, we can't go to the restaurant. We go to the restaurant, we gotta wait a half an hour to get waited on. Go to Lowe's, there's nobody to help me load my car." Well, where do you expect these people to live? Who's to say that a multifamily, and whether it's low income, and we can tweak the numbers, but can't be good neighbors? It's not limited to Naxhead. I've been working with, listening to Dare County put this plan together for three years. It was brought together by the Chamber of Commerce, then they turned the projects over to the Department of Government, School of Government, and now they took it on their own, and they're making progress. They appropriated thirty-five million dollars from the state to solve the affordable housing problem here, and this is only going to make a dent in it, but we've got to take the first step. It's got to go somewhere. I was in Manio, sat to many meeting in Manio over this. They said, "Well, our roads are too crowded. We've got the schools, we've got the community college, so we can't fit any housing projects." Well, one is going in on property that's owned by Dare County right now, and that's going to start very shortly. Looked at this, and again, I don't know if this is a good piece of property, I don't know where the property is. They were proposing looking at some property on the Baum track. Well, we don't want it there either. Of course, nobody wants it. They all want affordable housing. We all want to see our employees housed in safe housing, but they do not want it in their neighborhood. I've been listening to the same story about multifamily housing for thirty years, and it's time we listen hard and tweak the numbers, so we got to do it. Put some time into it, and if we have to do that, you've got the talent and you've got people working in government, let's find a place for it. I'm selfish. Maybe the next time your water gets shut off and you have a leak in your house and you call a plumber, he says, "I can't come for a week because I don't have the workforce." And this is what we've got. In 2008 recession, a lot of people left the area, a lot of construction people left, took on job supervision, and they left. Our businesses have not retooled. They've not hired back for trucks for a plumber or an electrician. We need these people. We need to work in Lowe's, we need the people who work in restaurants, and you need it in the town. There are entry-level positions, and this is where the entry-level positions, they can live. They probably won't live there forever, and there's no reason that they can't be kept nice and, and be an asset to the community. I've seen it in Manio, I've seen it the project behind Food Rama. You don't know which house to subsidize, which apartment, and which aren't. So let's not be selfish. Let's take the first step, look at it, work the numbers, make sure they're right, make sure it's profitable, and Wota Cooper and Coastal Affordable Housing who worked, the two contractors that the county has hired, they have to make a profit. They're in business. They can't give it away. There's a lot of work involved, and it's a lot of money. Whether, you know, I'm not smart enough to, to understand all the ins and outs of it, but I'm sure you are. I wanted to thank Andy, Mr. Gorman, he is the town manager, and his staff for the white paper you did. Fantastic paper. Everything was spelled out. It was, so we could take a look at it. If you haven't looked at it, go to the website. It's well worth taking, you know, ten minutes to read it. So I'll go from there, and I'll let you take it, but I hope you, you follow up on this too, and not deal with emotion, and, and maybe Naxhead could take the first step on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity.
My name is Basil Belches. I live in Naxhead on South Memorial Avenue. Lots of topics here today, lots of good stuff. I'd like to speak a little bit about the Wota Cooper project. I've also got the, the white paper off the Town Naxhead, Town Naxhead website. It had a lot of good information. I appreciate that. And I'm not going to dwell on some of the questions I had that other people have already talked about, like the taxes, tax exempt status, and how a lot of seniors might end up there, which doesn't support our essential workforce, and also how a lot of the, the town workforce would, would be overqualified for that area. I've spoken a couple of times on this, and I've thought, and my wife also, fifty-four units on that property, actually, what got our attention was the affordable housing piece, but even if you put fifty-four luxury condos on that property, we're still going to have the same problems as far as crowding, traffic, sewage, stormwater, and worst of all, it would not be in line with the historic character area designation. So I support the moratorium, which is in place now, and encourage the board commissioners and the planning board to figure out how we can rezone that or designate it for some low-density project that goes in, along with the historic character area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I'll let you go, sir. I'm going to be quick. I don't have to do government stuff anymore. I'm George Warrens. I'm a park superintendent in Jockeys Ridge for over thirty years. I worked with D.L. Dykes in a lot of different ways to help get a building over there where, when we built the visitor center to operate the hang glider in session out of, so it didn't have to cross the highway anymore. I know Francis and Gertrude, I knew them from their visits to Jockeys Ridge, and I know very fond people, and I, I thought a lot of them. I do not think that Jockeys Ridge is the place appropriate for another museum. State has a museum which is being renovated, and there was some facts that were not accurate on both sides, but the, where they would put, they would like to put the Regalo Museum is not, it is in the protected area, and they have good, through the state government and all of this, the Natural Heritage Program, and all the federal government to build over there. The buildings that are there and the renovations were already in, consistent with the property usage and Natural Heritage Program. It was already, when we built the original visitor center, Andy's, it was already incorporated in there, that piece of property with a picnic area and all of that, and I think some of this where this other building is, we'll take the picnic area, just delete it. I don't think, and after my thirty years, I think I've got a little bit of knowledge about what goes and what doesn't at Jockeys Ridge, and we worked very, very hard to get it where it is today. The visitor center and museum, were part of the original master plan, and as park superintendent, I've never heard about this until, I mean, I retired, but I would think that somebody would come and talk to me about, "What do you think about this?" But nobody, well, first I heard Ann Kabel got in touch with me from The Voice. The article in The Voice about a visitor center, I mean, a visitor center for Regalo, and that's, yeah, that's the first I've ever heard of this, and after thirty years, thirty-two years of superintendent, looks like I would have heard something about it. I did. And I do not think at all whatsoever that this is the accurate, appropriate place. You know, you're talking about the Wright Brothers, go ask the Wright Brothers if they give you a lease for nothing. You know, they're not going to let you put a building up there. I don't know if you've asked them before, but I don't think you have, or not, and if you did, the reason it's not there is because they didn't let you. There's a lot of back and forth on this project that has a little misinformation in ground. That's, I mean, that's going to happen when you do anything with this nation. I'm here to tell you, the Regalo Museum is not appropriate at Jockeys Ridge State Park. Jockeys Ridge State Park is there because people recognize the features of Jockeys Ridge that nowhere else in the world. It's a beautiful place, it doesn't need anything else, and the buses and busloads they park over in Jockeys Ridge Park in the lot, and they go up, and the ranger's giving programs, you know, all the time. And I don't know how many park over across the street. I think it's not a good idea because you've got to cross the highway, and that's a whole different ballgame there, but I'm not going there. As former park superintendent, which I think a lot of what's going on with Jockeys Ridge now, I was somewhat responsible for, I am responsibly telling you that this is not a great place to build this museum. I'm all for the museum, I'm all for the Regalos. I thought very highly of them myself. I travel here quite often. This is not the right place. There is, property is expensive, John. There's a whole bunch of property across the street over there at Jockeys Ridge Crossing, which I don't get that either. It's not the right place. There are other places under affordable housing, you know, you wouldn't mind, you wouldn't want a visitor center up there behind your property right across from Jockeys Ridge. You've got property, use some of your property you already have, sell it to yourself. You know, that's probably an underhanded comment, but I didn't want to get up here and talk. I just, but Jockeys Ridge means a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Warrens.
Good morning. My name is David Carroll. I am a resident of Naxhead. I've been here since 2006 and homeowner in the Cove since 2012. Was going to originally talk about that, but this issue of Wota Cooper, I felt was kind of important. I've been also serving on the Northeastern Workforce Development Board now for ten years, representing organized labor, something you all don't have a lot of out here, but there are a number of people. Specifically for me, radio brought me out here, but defense kept me here because I work out at the Air Force Dare County Bombing Range. We are a unionized shop. I am a proud union member and was asked by my union in 2020 to take over as a business representative, representing the interest of North Carolina. What we have here is a situation with Wota Cooper presenting a project that is, regardless of concerns about transparency, is absolutely necessary for this community. While I agree with you that the numbers need to be reconsidered, we tend to look at workforce, sometimes professionally. And while, yes, the salaries that are being compensated presently to teachers, to police officers would put them out of scale of this project, I agree, they can rework the numbers. But when it comes down to issues of workforce, we have But when it comes down to issues of workforce, we have to understand that much of the workforce, specifically for this community, is in the service sector. Service sector people are the people who make it possible for homeowners to be able to rent out those homes for vacations, for the people who clean those houses after people stay, and the hotels, and the restaurants, and every single business here. And I don't know if you've noticed since 2020, if you try to go into a business, you're going to have to wait, and that's because people can't hire. And the reason why they can't hire is because people can't afford to live here. If you work a regular job, making, and out here unfortunately, while I have been an advocate for, you know, fight for 15, that's not what you pay out here. You pay 11, 12, 13, $14 an hour. And that may or may not be seasonable work, but try to rent an apartment anywhere, even with roommates for that amount of money. You can't. And so this project, and I'm most happy to hear the homeowners association or homebuilders association weigh in on this, so many of what makes work possible out here, what makes our lifestyle possible out here, is we need workers. And workers aren't coming here. I talk to employers all the time, and I read constantly. And what we hear from workers or employers, especially in the service sector, is that we can't find people, or people don't want to work. No, they just don't want to work for very little bit of money, but especially if they have to drive one and a half hours to two hours to get to work, especially in season. Now, you can say, oh, well, maybe you can rent an apartment, or maybe you can rent someone's room. Well, we've utilized that with out-of-country labor, and that may work for eight or nine months, or eight or nine weeks, but on the long term, because so many of these businesses now are not just working a short season. There's the shoulder season. They're year-round operations. You need people to work there, but employers can't find people because they can't afford to live here. So I'm sorry the gentleman left because he made an interesting point about the fact that, well, we have a lot of other places that we can put it. There is this NIMBY quality with people about not wanting to have affordable housing in their backyard because it doesn't attract the element that they want to have. Well, those are just people trying to work for a living. The fact that they are here working shows you that they're the kind of people that we want to have in this community, the kind of people we need in this community. I don't know where the ideal location is. We need to find something. But if this discussion has been going on for 30 years, it's about time, and I agree, that the county needs to be more transparent with the municipalities. One of the things I've discovered in workforce development is, most of these magisterias do not talk to one another. Economic developers don't want to share information with other economic developers because people think that if they still pipe that data, they'll get a project that somebody else will get. Well, we need more cooperation. I'm going to make this short, but we lost a major project out in Hyde County because we didn't want to work together to bring a drone program that has gone up to Cape, up to the Cape up in Virginia. They now have a program that's bringing in tens of millions of dollars per year because we didn't want to work together and share data. We need to attract workers. We need to attract people who are going to build to accommodate those workers' housing needs. And I hope that you'll all give greater and serious consideration to, rather than shooting down the project because it wasn't shared with you early enough, to look at other options. Again, I don't know the ideal location. Maybe there isn't a place in Nag's Head. But we do need to move forward on trying to find affordable housing for the other workforce, the people who cannot afford to live anywhere in the county, nor can they afford to continue to drive to Park City. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Good morning. My name is Carol Sparks. I live in Southern Shores, and I own property here in Nag's Head. My parents were Francis and Gertrude Regalo, and I retired from 30 years of teaching, the last 11 of which were here in Dare County, Manio High School, and First Flight Middle School. Okay. I am vice president of the Dare County chapter of North Carolina retired school personnel, and I serve as fundraiser and treasurer for their scholarship fund. I am also a board member of the Regalo Foundation. Not only are my parents the inventors of the flexible wing, they both devoted a great deal of time and effort to help Jockeys Ridge become a state park. When Carolista Baum was organizing the Save Our Sand Dunes Project, they worked very hard and would attend the Save Our Sand Dunes meetings in support to ensure the dunes were not going to be developed. They also, I believe, supported Save Our Sand Dunes Project through their donations. My mother, having also been a school teacher and an avid member of the Dunes of Dare Garden Club, was well aware of the importance of the dunes and the surrounding areas, especially for educational purposes. My father recognized the value of the dunes for wind research, as well as testing area for newly developed wings. His dream was to have a wind research center located in the park for all people to use and investigate possibilities of uses for wind. He was given a hang glider on his 62nd birthday, then he personally flew many times on Jockeys Ridge, with his last flight taking place on his 80th birthday. During the early 70s, my father designed a flexible wing kite, made of paper on which it was printed SOS, Save Our Sand Dunes, and floated. Carolista Baum designed the vertige on the kite. He designed the kite. And for, okay, for the Save Our Sand Dunes Project. You can tell I do not care for public speaking. Okay? And I'm sorry. Classroom, I was great. Okay. I and a friend, Mary Ann McGinnis, made and sold many of these kites for the Save Our Sand Dunes Project. All kites were made, and the time we spent were our way to give support to this major effort. Carolista even sent Mary Ann and me to Raleigh to promote the Save Our Sand Dunes Project at a relatively new Crabtree Mall. That was way back, 50 years ago. My hope is that you can see without a doubt that my family worked tirelessly to make Jockeys Ridge a state park that everyone could learn from and enjoy. I also sincerely hope that you will reconsider and support having an educational and historical museum on this same state land. So I hope you will do that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks.
Good morning. My name is Ralph Buxton. I live at 448 West Billad Dunes Drive. I've already written you a letter before you took action, you realize you're going to take action on the Regalo Museum project, and I asked that you enter that into the record. I do enthusiastically support this project, and I've listened this morning to the comments, and I understand, and I think it's out of real sincerity, that there are concerns on both sides, and those need to be properly addressed. I do think, though, that there hasn't been a due process allowed to do that. And unfortunately, the town took a position here prematurely, and that affected the state's position. And that was, that was huge. I mean, the Regalo Foundation has been working for years to plan this effort, to raise monies and support, build support, and that was really undercut so quickly by this board. And I don't understand it. It's not like Nag's Head. You all don't do things like that normally. I mean, just hearing what, the presentation this morning by the housing folks here, Woda Cooper, gee, that's the kind of thing that shouldn't have been happening here in considering this Jockeys Ridge, excuse me, the Jockeys Ridge Regalo Museum. Let's do a little bit more homework. Let's please give this project the due that it deserves. These are well-intentioned people. They're good people. Let's listen to the people that live here and work here, okay? I don't know who these 2,500 people from 37 states are. I mean, you know, you can go on the internet nowadays and get responses internationally. And, but how well-informed are those responses? So I just ask that the town rescind your letter, and please give this a due process that both sides can vet, and we can come to a good conclusion and build the proper support that's needed. You've undercut the credibility, I think, of the Regalo Foundation, and that's, that really concerns me because these are good people. And I've known John Harris for 56 years, and I know that he, his intentions are to build something that is good for the community here. He doesn't need a gift shop, believe me, in Jockeys Ridge. He doesn't, there's, and this is not an effort to commercialize Jockeys Ridge. So please do revisit your action and just back off, and let's have a process here that behooves the town and the community and these two fine organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Allen. I'm a former resident of Nag's Head and a current resident of Southern Shores, and I apologize in advance if I go too long. I'll count on Mr. Lighty to cut me off. Honestly, thought I had between five and 10 minutes, and so I'm going to have to skip around a little bit and possibly ad lib, and that's not what I do well in these situations. I'm a CPA. I was licensed in 1985 after moving here in 1983 and working at Hutchins Boyd for a couple of years to get my experience and pass the exam. As a CPA and a member of professional associations, I am held to a very strict code of professional conduct, and I'm very disappointed that I have to be here today after all of these years of doing the right thing to defend my reputation. I'll try not to get too emotional about that. But that's why I'm here, so I'm going to skip to the most important part of what I have to say. In addition to the fact that the Regalos Foundation to build a museum has absolutely positively been no secret from anyone, nor has it been a secret that there are common board members between Kitty Hawk Heights and the Regalo Foundation. I'm here primarily in my volunteer role as the treasurer of the Regalo Foundation, and I'm also wearing the other hat that I do wear, which is CFO at Kitty Hawk Heights, and I'm married to John Harris, okay? But the Internal Revenue Service approved the application for recognition of exemption by the Regalo Foundation way back when it was formed, when John Harris was then president of Kitty Hawk Heights and president of the Regalo Foundation. The foundation followed the rules it needed to follow and does the things it needs to do to keep the entities separate and to mostly make sure there is no benefit to the for-profit business from the nonprofit corporation. That's what can't happen and doesn't happen. The for-profit business can certainly do things to help the nonprofit corporation that it's associated with, but it cannot go the other way. And people have said that that's happening, and it's not happening. So what I'm here today to do, and I wanted to do it a lot slower and maybe a little nicer, but what I want to say is, in your letter to the state of North Carolina, you said, inclusion of a museum gift shop appears to be a private endeavor to benefit the owners. I guess by saying appears to be, you've prevented this from being a totally false statement. However, the only people making the gift shop appear to be a private operation are people who are feeding you misleading information. The gift shop would be part of a public charity, and the funds would benefit only that nonprofit organization running the museum, the Regalo Foundation. This is stated in both the original draft memorandum of understanding that some people have obtained from the state, and in the second revised draft that was provided to the state by the Regalo Foundation after some feedback from park staff on the first one way back in 2019, after the first Regalo Foundation presentation to the Friends of Jockeys Ridge on this proposed museum at Jockeys Ridge State Park, not on the sand dunes. No one has asked us for copies of either of these early-stage working documents. No one has asked us any questions at all since 2019 at the meeting we attended. We being members of the board. I wasn't personally there. The future museum gift shop of the Regalo Foundation's museum will not benefit any private businesses or individuals. I am asking you to publicly correct your statement, as I believe it negatively affects the ability of the Regalo Foundation to raise funds for a museum and other exempt purposes. It could endanger our exempt status. It certainly damages my personal reputation, my professional reputation, and that of the other board members. So once again, I'm asking you to publicly correct the statement made in your letter to the state of North Carolina. I also want to say that the second draft memorandum that nobody asked to see and for some reason was not shared, did say that the gift shop would pay concession fees just as Kitty Hawk Heights pays concession fees on every dollar of revenue earned in the park at the retail shop there, which is the only retail in the park. Your commissioners were also quoted as saying this museum gift shop would compete with the existing park gift shop that does not exist. The only retail there is Kitty Hawk Kite Flight School, and we pay concession fees on every dollar made there and on every dollar earned from teaching hang gliding or any kiteboarding lessons. You wanted the, George wanted financials to be presented for five or six years. Revenues are reported every month on time. Fees are paid every month to the state of North Carolina. Five preceding years George asked about, the average was $90,000 a year. This year exceeds that. Just asking you to correct your records. I'm sorry there's been so much misinformation, and I'm emotional and planned too long of comments. I hope you'll take the time to read them.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone in the room who hasn't given a public comment?
Hi. My name is Holly Nettles. I'm a property owner in Nag's Head, and I had not planned to speak today, but I just feel like I need to add a couple of points about some of the other comments. There is a building on, there is a visitor center at Jockeys Ridge. I don't know the exact square footage. It's a little over 5,000 square feet. With our renovation, it's going to be around 7,000 square feet. The Regalo Museum is proposed to be 12,000 square feet, which would dwarf our visitor center. This is not a large piece of property compared to other state parks, and there is no way that a building this size will not have an environmental impact on the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nettles. Thank you, Ms. Nettles. Last one. What's that?
Good morning. My name's Bobby Harrell. I am a real estate broker, have been for 39 years. Dare County primarily. Personally own property in Nags Head since 1985. Maintain an office in Nags Head for the last 20 years. So I do relate to Nags Head, and I appreciate what's been done in Nags Head to preserve it. At the same time, I see the challenge every day trying to find housing for people that need to work here and want to work here. In the last meeting, I stated that we've got a list of 156 people waiting right now for housing. We do run a long-term rental program. We're not involved in the weekly rental programs. The comment's been made that the site that Woda Cooper has under contract now, why can't you put it somewhere else? I've been getting that call, like Duke mentioned. I've been getting that call for over 30 years, somebody looking for places to put apartments. In our area, not just Nags Head, Killable Hills, Kitty Hawk, Manio, all these areas I work in, I live on Roanoke Island, have for 40 years. You know, we don't have the density that's allowed, nor do we have the central sewers that's needed in most cases to accommodate multifamily housing. The density level that's proposed on the Nags Head site is really low considering the total number of bedrooms. Site's 4.7 acres approximately. There's a proposal for 54 units, which will be about 108 bedrooms. The adjoining properties, as I stated earlier, there are 19 cottages to the east of it that have a total of 91 bedrooms. There are five more cottages to the north across Hollowell Street that average five bedrooms each as well. Out of these 23 cottages, 24 cottages, there are 17 of these cottages that are currently in rental programs, either through local real estate companies or through VRBO. I did some research based on occupants of these cottages and bedrooms and potential occupants. One particular cottage that adjoins this site, five bedrooms, rented for 40 weeks last year. If you figure five bedrooms, two people per bedroom, 40 weeks, that's 400 people turned over in one cottage that's adjacent to the site. And I say that so that people understand that's potentially going to be 216 people living on this 4.7 acre site. You know, one cottage turned 400 people last year that's adjacent to it. If you assume the 17 cottage on the very conservative figure of 20 weeks rented per year and 10 occupants per cottage, that's 3,400 people that turned on the adjoining site that came and went last year. I know that Woda Cooper and their properties thoroughly vet the people that will stay there, rent problem, get typically on a one-year lease. You assume here that 3,400 people turned. The primary reason and way they're vetted is one, by rental companies, is that they're 25 years old and can afford to pay. So the density and number of people coming and going on adjacent properties is far more than the potential on the existing property. Again, when they say that, you know, can't they go somewhere else, find somewhere else? Believe me, I've looked over the last 39 years for sites that you could put this on because it's desperately needed. One figure that I'll share is that 80% of the land in Dare County is owned by the government, either state or federal. So when you look at the land mass, a very small portion of it. And then you add in the wetlands and et cetera. It's almost impossible to find a site like this because I've looked for many years. As far as the affordability, I understand that, you know, police force, starting salaries, some of the teacher salaries, you know, those workers, you know, may be priced out. But also, there's another whole, several layers of workforce that are needed. When I looked at some of our... Thought about some of our adjoining small businesses here in Nags Head. For instance, Owens Restaurant has been established and operated for over 70 years. Most of us have probably eaten there numerous times. This year, Owens Restaurant was typically closing one or two days a week because of lack of staff. The only reason they had chefs is because they own a small motel and they could house the chefs that moved here to work in the restaurant. Salmon O's, another restaurant that's been here since 1937, they close every Wednesday. But if you figure one of these restaurants, prime season closes one day a week, they're losing 14% of their possible income during the prime season, assuming they operate roughly six months out of year. You know, that's 25 to 30% of their potential income. They're losing by closing one day, and the reason they're closing is because they don't have a workforce.
Mr. Harrell, that's just over five minutes.
Okay. That was the main of the items I wanted to stress. I hope you reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment at this time? If not, I know we have a couple of items to be read into the record. Mr. Mayor, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Well, we will conclude the live portion of the public comment, and we'll proceed to those letters.
Okay. Thank you. The first is from Mr. Bruce Weaver. My name is Bruce Weaver, Outer Banks resident for 30 years and secretary of the Regala Foundation. I moved away in 2019 but have kept my position with the foundation because I believe strongly in its mission and its goal to build a museum to honor the Regalos. I would like to start by going on record with some of my thoughts on the museum. I spent all of my 30 years on the Outer Banks working on Jockeys Ridge as a member of the Flight School at Kitty Hawk Kites. I've spent as much or more time than anybody on Jockeys Ridge. Its majesty and beauty are unparalleled, and sunsets from the top of the ridge are the best I've ever seen. It is a magical place, and it's important that it be... That it is preserved. I would not be a part of anything that would harm the park, and neither would anybody on our board. Any implications otherwise are false. During my time at Jockeys Ridge, I worked very closely with the park staff. The staff evolved over the years, but one constant remained, their dedication to the park. The current staff is no different. They are fantastic. I go visit them whenever I'm back on the beach. I also attended the Friends of Jockeys Ridge meetings on a regular basis spanning the careers of all three superintendents. In addition to Jockeys Ridge, I'm also passionate about flight and have been ever since I took my first flight on Jockeys Ridge in 1987. It didn't take long after that first flight for me to see what flying meant to other people as well. The sense of joy, awe, accomplishment, and empowerment that comes with flight is very powerful. These feelings are not easily found in our everyday lives, but people experience them daily flying from the sand dune. The best thing I've ever done. I can't believe I did it. You've changed my life. These comments are heard daily from people flying on the ridge. To have such a positive impact on people is very meaningful, and it's the reason I dedicated 30 years to giving people that experience. It's been going on since the early '70s and is still going on every day, not only here but around the world. It's all made possible by Francis and Gertrude Regala, residents of the Outer Banks. Despite all the history of aviation that the Outer Banks is known for, not enough people know about the Regalas' contributions. They don't realize that the stunt kites, hang gliders, paragliders, and kite surfing kites that are seen in Jockeys Ridge State Park are all descendants of the Regalo wing. Not only did he test his wings on Jockeys Ridge, it's the only place in the country where all the iterations of his wing are used on a daily basis. Jockeys Ridge State Park is the perfect place to tell the Regalo story. With this in mind, the Regala Foundation set out to talk to the state about the possibility of a museum inside the park, not on the sand dune. We were met with positive feedback, but we were warned that it would be a long process. We were given steps to take to start determining the viability of the project. Following those steps brought us up to our most recent efforts to create awareness. Just as we started, false and misleading statements started being made and published about the project. I was disappointed, but in retrospect, not surprised to find out that some people would knowingly spread misinformation, allegations, and lies in order to manipulate people's opinions about the museum. Nonetheless, I was sure that as we moved forward and facts were disseminated, that we would be able to have legitimate and constructive discussions on the details of the project. Due to the actions of those few who willingly misrepresented the facts and a few of you perhaps unknowingly amplified those statements, those discussions never happened. I do not believe the commissioners deliberately used false statements in their letter to the state. I'd like to believe that you were duped as well as much of the public. My questions to the board are, why the urgency to send a letter to the state? And why wouldn't the foundation be contacted to clarify any uncertainties that the board might have before sending that letter? It's difficult to understand how a project that would have such benefit to the town, the Outer Banks, and visitors from all over the world could be so quickly derailed without any communication with the foundation. In your haste, you most certainly affected the state's decision to no longer consider a museum on park property. The false statements in your letter by now are well documented, but I would like to directly address the statement. There appears to be a widespread community opposition to the project. A petition in opposition to the project was distributed by Carolista Baum's daughter, Anne Cabblebaum, which contained the signatures of 1,471 people from 37 states. It's an odd statement to indicate community opposition, but if policy is even partially dictated by petition, we would be happy to generate a petition showing support for the museum. I've always believed that integrity is easier kept than recovered. Yet here I am, needing to defend my integrity and the integrity of the Regala Foundation because of the actions of a few who don't play by the same rules. Oh, over a project to honor a local resident whose invention has positively affected millions of lives around the globe at a site that was integral to the development of his invention and where the fruits of his labor are enjoyed every day. It's not right. This is from G.W. Meadows, vice president of the Regala Foundation, a resident of Kitty Hawk. Honorable Mayor Ben Kahoon, commissioners of the town of Nags Head, I am not able to be in attendance today and ask that you read my letter into the record. I've read it several times out loud, and it takes less than five minutes. On October 5th, the Regala Foundation's Board of Directors attended the Nags Head Board of Commissioners meeting as part of our ongoing public awareness campaign in regard to our efforts to build an educational museum to tell the story of the genesis of the flexible wing and all of its versions from kiteboarding kites, stunt kites, paragliders, hang gliders, and modern ram air parachutes. Prior to coming to the Nags Head Board of Commissioners meeting, we had attended in early 2019 a Friends of Jockeys Ridge Board meeting, in the fall of 2022, a Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting, and an Outer Banks Visitors Bureau meeting, all with the purpose of informing the public of what we were trying to achieve. In 2017, we identified Jockeys Ridge State Park as a logical and perfect location of the Regala Museum, due to the many experiments that Mr. Regala performed out on the ridge as well as the current use of many of the descendants of the original flexible wing in and around the state park. We then started what we knew would be a long process, the process of getting permission to build a museum inside the boundary of the state park. Throughout the process, every state administrative official that we met with, including the directors, expressed support while letting us know it would be a long process. We did everything that was suggested to us by the state. We spent a lot of the foundation's money following their recommendations. While knowing it was a long process to even be considered for approval, we believe the museum's contribution to the Outer Banks. We trudged forward on the long, expensive road to try to get state approval. The Regala Foundation, as well as the state, were both operating in good faith. At the October 5th Nags Head Board of Commissioners meeting, where we utilized our 10 minutes of allotted time to let this board know what we were working toward, we were surprised that there was opposition to the project. The public comment format only allows for statements to be made and understandably does not allow for the correction of the incorrect statements or rebuttal. While we knew that a number of the allegations stated in the public comment portion of the October 5th meeting were factually wrong or misrepresentations of the facts, we decided that the best way to address these was to methodically get the facts out there. We actively decided to not respond in an argumentative manner because of the optics of doing so. We knew this was a long process, and we just needed to discriminate the facts. We were aware that governments move slowly and deliberately with a lot of input. If you look at the museum page of the Regala Foundation's website, you can see one of the methods that we employed to get the facts out there in a non-confrontational way. Imagine our utter amazement when we were told that the commissioners of the town of Nags Head, just two weeks after we presented our plans to them, voted unanimously to write a letter to the state in support of the resolution against the museum that had been passed by the Friends of Jockeys Ridge. We simply could not believe that the governing body of a town would move that quickly to state its opposition to an educational museum without getting the facts first. To get those facts, all you had to do was ask. In your letter to the state, you authoritatively state that the project is inconsistent with the mission of the park. The Jockeys Ridge State Park General Management Plan lists the mission statement of the park as the first item in the document. One of the three items in this mission statement is as follows: education, to encourage appreciation of natural and cultural heritage of North Carolina through diverse educational opportunities for all citizens and visitors to the state of North Carolina. We have been told in the past by the state that our proposed museum is indeed consistent with the mission of the park. In 20 seconds, you can Google Jockeys Ridge State Park mission and see the words above on the first page. All you had to do was ask. In your letter to the state, you authoritatively state that there has been distinct lack of information disseminated about the proposed project. I cannot possibly understand how you can say that when just two weeks prior, we came before you voluntarily to use up our allotted 10 minutes, speaking as fast as we could to get as much information to you as possible. We were going from group to group to disseminate this information. We were happy to tell anyone anytime more information about our proposed museum. Again, all you had to do was ask. In your letter to the state, you write, "Inclusion of a museum gift shop appears to be a private endeavor to benefit the owners." I hardly know where to start with this statement. First of all, there are no owners of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. There is a board that steers the foundation. Regarding the museum gift shop, our memorandum of understanding sent to the state plainly says, 100% of the revenues from retail operations, admission fees, or donations to the museum would go to support museum operations. If you, as the governing body of a town, think something appears a certain way, there's a way to find the facts. We are happy to tell anyone who will listen. Again, all you had to do was ask. In your letter to the state, you write, "There appears to be widespread community opposition to the project." A petition in opposition was distributed by Carolista Baum, the daughter of Anne... Carolista Baum's daughter, Anne Cabblebaum, which contained the signatures of 1,471 people from 37 states. Did you notice that in a single sentence pointed out widespread community opposition from 37 states? I'm reasonably certain that 36 of the 37 states could not be considered community. However, this statement, it sounds powerful. You just can't say accurately that 1,471 people from 37 states represents community opposition. Your willingness as a board to move so quickly without taking the time to find out the facts has added a misplaced legitimacy fuel to a fire of lies, misrepresentation, and personal attacks. I have little doubt personally that your letter, when combined with the Friends of Jockeys Ridge resolution, helped the state make a premature decision to no longer consider the Regala Museum. I have no problem with all the facts being heard and then the state deciding it's not the best use of the park, but I have a tremendous issue with lies, misrepresentations, and personal attacks being used to determine something's magnitude. I understand that most likely the board has no idea how many of the statements that have been made against the museum lately are apparently false and that you're backing them up. But then again, all you had to do was ask. It's not like Jockeys Ridge Board of Commissioners... It's not like the Nags Head Board of Commissioners do not know how to get in touch with John Harris, president of the Regala Foundation. John has operated one of the largest businesses in your town for almost 50 years. At this point, the Regala Foundation is trying to get its reputation back. Obviously, to build our museum anywhere, it will require the support and donations of the community. We feel that the lies and misrepresentations about the foundation that were willingly told and inadvertently backed up by the Nags Head Board of Commissioners will take a bit of work to overcome. People remember sensationalism and dirt. You only have to look at comments to articles to see that people are believing the lies that are being reported. With this letter, I ask you to rescind your letter to the state. It would be the right thing to do. I'm not saying it will be an easy decision, but it would be the right decision. Thank you for your time. G.W. Meadows. With that, I believe, John, we conclude the public comment. Thank all of you who appeared today and spent a lot of your time. We appreciate that. The board is going to take about a 15-minute break. I would ask the town manager, we ran... We bulldozed over a time-specific item probably an hour and a half ago. If you will find out when they can appear. If we need to take them as soon as we come back, that would be fine. Okay, they're here. So the board will return, amend the agenda, take on that time-specific item, and then go from there. So the board will be in recess. Nourishment, which originally had been time-specific for 10:30 this morning. David?
Can I make a request to delay this? We're having some technical difficulty with bringing up the presentation.
Yes, no problem. Just wave at me when you're ready. So we will go back to the agenda.
Sounds good.
Until you're ready. All right. Then we will jump back to the consent agenda, item E. You have the consent... You have the consent agenda before you, and a motion would be in order.
I have a motion and a second.
To approve the consent agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Reluctant to go into public hearings, but I think we will. So let's go to item F1, a public hearing to consider a special use site plan submitted by Quaible and Associates. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit/site plan review that was submitted by Michael Strater with Quaible and Associates for the construction of a trade center. The property is zoned C3, commercial services, and is located on Lot 2A of the Charles L. Sineeth subdivision. I want to point out for the board that this is a matter in which the board sits as a quasi-judicial body. That means that there is a special process for how the board is required to adjudicate how the general law applies to a particular situation based on an evidentiary record that is presented during this hearing. Your two key responsibilities are, one, to determine contested facts, and, two, to apply the legal standards to these facts. You may apply only the standards already contained in the town's ordinance. You are not permitted to change or modify those standards during this hearing or as part of your decision in this case. In conducting this hearing, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. The board members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. Questions from the floor will not be permitted except by cross-examination from any of the sworn witnesses who are recognized to speak. A member must not vote on the application if the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct and substantial financial impact on the member. If such a direct and financial impact or conflict exists, the member should disclose it and ask to be recused from consideration of the matter. Similarly, if any members who are present have had any contact with anyone prior to this hearing in which the particulars of this application were discussed, or if you have received letters, email messages, phone calls, or other contact from anyone concerning this matter prior to this hearing, you must disclose those communications because you must base your decision on this application entirely on the facts that are presented during this hearing and disregard the particulars that are discussed with the applicant or other persons. And a member must base his or her decision on the evidence that's presented during this hearing. Any member who has developed a predetermined opinion or bias on the outcome of this application before the hearing must not participate on this application. So, at this time, I ask whether any member needs to recuse themselves from the hearing for one of the reasons that I have already explained, or do you need to disclose any ex parte communications that you previously received?
Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself. I have knowledge of this situation beyond may have interest and spoke to John, and he said I should.
Okay.
So that would make a motion to recuse the mayor pro tem appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
If that motion is a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recuse the mayor pro tem. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else who needs to disclose any potential conflict of interest? Or any ex parte communications regarding the substance of this matter? Okay? Additionally, your decision must be based on competent, substantial, and material evidence properly entered into the record of this hearing. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during this hearing. While you may be presented before or during this hearing with copies of unworn statements contained in letters, emails, and the like, such unworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence that's presented during the hearing. So, at this time, all those who will be presenting evidence relating to this application need to approach the clerk, and she will administer the oath to them, and then we will begin the evidentiary presentation. All right, at this time, we will begin the evidentiary presentation regarding this application, and we'll begin with the staff's analysis presented by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you so much. Good morning, almost afternoon. Hopefully, this will be a fairly quick item to go through. I went ahead and brought the site plan up, so we can look at that as we go through the staff report. As mentioned, the applicant here is Quaible and Associates on behalf of Massey LLC. This is a special use permit/site plan review for your consideration. This is going to be for construction of an 11,200-square-foot building that includes eight units operating as a trade center with parking and all associated site improvements. I got a question pretty consistently throughout this, which is, what is a trade center? So the definition of a trade center, it's a structure containing two or more individual units primarily devoted to service and wholesale operations and storage of materials for off-site work. That being said, the property is currently vacant. It is located at, well, it's got a zero address. It's off of Satterfield Landing Road, and it's between TW's Bait and Tackle and Village Realty Maintenance. Let's see here. So, yeah, here we go. All right. The property is zoned C3, Commercial Services zoning district, and surrounding properties are predominantly C3 and C2. However, there is an R2 medium-density residential district to the west of the property, so here we go. Flood hazard, it's with the town's local elevation standard. It's located in a nine-foot flood zone, and the trade center is proposed to have a first-floor elevation of 11 feet, so therefore it is compliant. Our 2022 comprehensive CAMA land use plan says that this, states that this is within a commercial services district, and when we look at the policies for that district, this type of use is consistent. As noted, this is a special use within the C3 district, and there's three criteria that must be met as part of the use. That is, individual units may contain office and sales area, however, that area shall not exceed 25% of the gross area. Each individual unit shall, at a minimum, contain a commode shower facility and lavatory, and that all work conducted on-site shall be entirely within the enclosed structure. As I said, this proposal has eight individual units on the interior, and those are 1,400 square feet in area. Approximately 14% of each unit is dedicated to office and restroom, so we have compliance with that first requirement there. Sheet A 1.1 of the packet shows the floor plan for the units, and you'll see that there's a toilet and a sink in each of the units. I won't go into a whole lot of detail here, but as we started looking at this, there was a question about why the need for a shower, and I went back and I reviewed the minutes from when this use was adopted into the code. There wasn't any conversation about why the need for a shower within each unit, assuming that it was for safety reasons, that you might be using corrosive materials that might be injurious, so perhaps that safety shower and eyewash facilities was why that was recommended. So while it wasn't included at the planning board stage, now that this is back before the Board of Commissioners, they have shown a safety shower and eyewash area within each of these units. Pull that up so that we can see where that's located. Okay, here we go. So you can see that this is now shown within this floor plan, so we have compliance with that requirement as well. And then it has also been noted as part of the narrative that there is no outdoor work, activity, or storage. So it is compliant with the supplemental standards. For lot coverage purposes, within the C3 district, there's a chart that actually must be adhered to as it relates to the proximity of this site to the fresh pond, and... Go back up here to the primary site plan. Okay, so, proposed impermeable surfaces on this site are 44.8%. You're allowed 45%, so that is compliant. Proposed impermeable surfaces on the site are 10.1%, and they're allowed 25%, so they're compliant with that regard as well. And there's over 44% of the site being retained in open space, and so therefore that is compliant. Allowable height for this structure is going to be 35 feet. The structure is just slightly over 20 feet in height, so it is compliant with that standard as well. Because this is in the C3 commercial services district where we have a lot of more intensive and commercial uses, there are no architectural design standards required. With regard to parking, required parking by use for warehouse, light, industrial, and trade centers states that they shall provide parking at one parking space per 750 gross square feet of floor area in each unit, but no less than three spaces per unit. Based on that, they are required to have 24 total parking spaces. They do have 24 parking spaces shown on-site. 14 of those spaces, you will note, are within the interior of the actual units. I'll go ahead and state that there is an intention to sprinkle protect this building, so having those parking areas on the interior is compliant since they are providing fire suppression. For loading zone requirements, it does state that this facility shall require a loading zone. It sets out the berth that should be provided, but it goes on to say that a loading space need not be necessarily a full berth, but shall be sufficient to allow normal loading and unloading operations of a kind and magnitude appropriate to the use. The town engineer shall determine the sufficiency of the loading space, but in no case shall the use of such space hinder the free movement of vehicles and pedestrians. The applicant has requested that consideration be given to a reduced loading and unloading zone. Based upon anticipated use and building size, the applicant has requested a 12-by-30 dedicated loading zone, and the applicant has stated that there would be limited product pickup and delivery expected through UPS and FedEx. So the town engineer has reviewed that and approved that reduced loading zone requirement. Section 10.92.14.4 Surface Materials states that the area of the parking lot, that 20% of that area should be proposed in some type of impermeable surface, such as turf stone, and they have proposed over 40% to be in a pervious paving material. So they're compliant in that regard as well. There's several sections of the UDO that speaks to buffering and landscaping. A 10-foot buffer yard is required where parking abuts any right-of-way. So as you can see, they do have that 10-foot landscape buffer shown here, adjacent to Satterfield Landing. The UDO also requires that commercial transitional protective yards, which is increased landscaping to be provided where a commercial use abuts residential use or residential zoning district. So that is what has been provided here along the back property line. That is compliant. It's 25 feet in width with three rows of plantings. Section 10.93.3.7 requires that interior parking lot landscaping be provided. However, because this is located within the C3 district, that does not have to be shown in this district. Lighting, a lighting plan has been provided. Staff is currently reviewing it, and obviously, before any type of lighting can be installed, that lighting plan will have to be reviewed and approved with permit issuance, and we'll follow up with a light audit. The Dare County Health Department has reviewed and approved the proposal as it's being presented, and the town engineer has reviewed traffic circulation and found that it is compliant as well. Stormwater management has also been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. When this went to the planning board, there was a condition that the roadway swell on the west side of the proposed driveway apron be extended to the western property corner, and that has since been shown, and the town engineer has looked at that as well. For fire purposes, this must comply with the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code, and that will be assured prior to issuance of any building permits, and the Public Works Director has also reviewed and approved the plan as it is proposed. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the use and development standards as well as land use policies, and based upon that, staff would recommend approval of the special use site plan as it's been presented. At their September 20th meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the special use permit/site plan review, conditioned upon meeting the town engineer's requirement for the driveway apron to be extended, and now that they have shown that, that is compliant. So with that, both staff and planning board have recommended approval as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We do have Michael Strater from Quaible and Associates available if you have any questions with him.
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
No.
Mr. Strater, do you have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Strater, if you want to present.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Michael Strater. I'm an engineer with Quaible and Associates, the civil engineer of record, for the special use site plan application package submitted before you today. As you heard and read within the staff report, the project is in conformance with the town's dimensional standards specified in the UDO. It's in conformance with the town's land use plan and compliant with all the local and state permits and approvals. I just wanted to express that I'm here and available should there be any questions or concerns from the board as you enter into your deliberations, and we appreciate your consideration.
All right, does the board have any questions for the engineer? Anything else you wish to present in support of the application?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Does the board wish to receive any other evidence before you begin your deliberations on this? All right. If not, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the board may begin its deliberations. I will point out that in order for the board to adopt, or rather approve this, there are several findings that need to be made, and these are listed at the end of the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. For the purposes of discussion, does someone wish to propose a motion?
For the purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we have previously presented.
Okay, thank you. With the findings?
With the findings listed at the bottom of the staff report.
Okay.
135.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
The information I had is clearly laid out in the staff report, and I appreciate such a thorough explanation of everything because trade centers, not something that you...
First one we've had in five years, for sure.
It was good. I appreciate Kelly and staff doing such a thorough job on that.
Okay. Yep, again.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, very much, pretty straightforward then. So we have a motion and a second. Hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Someone, please let Mr. Sears. And are we ready for the presentation?
Yes.
We are? Okay. Thank you. Then we will return to item H2, the update on beach nourishment. David?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. We've got... We've got Brian Joyner from the firm, Moplin Nickel, to go ahead and present on all things beach nourishment. We've got an update from the 2022 Post Dorian Project in conjunction with the annual surveying report, and then finally, an update to the beach nourishment master plan. Included in your packet was a PDF file of a draft copy of the annual survey, and I've got hard copies here that I want to go ahead and pass out to.
Sure.
And at this point, I'll go ahead and I'll pass it over to Brian Joyner. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good morning, or good early afternoon, but anyway, it's good to see you all again. I'll wait for the passing to occur before I really start. Should I go ahead and start without a?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, great. So, well, three different, three related but different subjects. I'll pack into my time, and I'll try to be brief. First, we'll do the beach monitoring, as David said, just summarizing what we found over the last year of survey in the beach, analyzing that survey data, and then we'll talk about the nourishment project and the master plan. With the beach monitoring, I mean, it's a similar presentation that we've had the last couple of years. We're now in our third year of doing it. We go through how we do the volume change, a little bit of definition of volume change and how we calculate those, just to remind everybody, and then straight to the results. But if you will remember, three years ago when we started picking up the monitoring survey, we recommended that you add some transect or profiles to the survey set, and so with the third year of having that extra information, we've got a pretty solid, consistent set of finer scale information that we're doing the calc on, and that's really supporting the master plan as well. So it was good that that was done. We're seeing some better resolution information. We're still comparing, though, back to older data, and that comparison is still going well, too. So that, the slide summarizes, you know, where we added 51 transects to the program. We did add a new reach back in 2020, so we picked up data closer to the inlet for the last three years, and that, again, is going into the larger master plan set of understanding and modeling. Then we've got much finer resolution in the southern part of the town. When I talk about things, just to remind everyone, we talk about the monitored ocean front, so we monitor from the town's northern limits all the way down to just north of the inlet. The nourished ocean front, Reach 1, 2, 3 north, 3 south, and Reach 4 is this green bar, nourished ocean front, and so we want to keep those separate in mind because we talk about them concurrently in the presentation. So getting into how we do the volume change, again, we do the shoreline change at mean high water, at a specific contour, not a specific spot on an aerial photo. We do that so that we can track that particular elevation year to year and have a better sense of how the beach width is changing, how the visible beach width, what we and the residents see, what people experience, and how far away that shoreline is from the dunes. So we track that contour. We also track the profile itself. We track the movement of the bar over time, and then we do volume calculations above certain elevations in the profile. So depth of closure may be this elevation here at minus 19. We do a volume calc around where the, well, depth of closure is here. We do minus 14, which mostly covers the offshore bar, and then we do minus 12, minus 6. Well, minus 6 mean high water, and then above plus 6 to really see what's changing in the dune as well. So we've got these different lenses that give us a clear picture in terms of statistics as to what's going on in the beach. So hopping to what we saw between last summer and this summer, I would say in general, there's been more, well, there's been more erosion in this past year than there was the previous year. So where we saw some reaches be more accretional in 2020 to 2021, 2021 to 2022, we saw sort of more erosion sort of across the board. Not critical erosion, but just more of an erosive trend. And we did try to tie that back to the wave conditions. This is a graph of the wave heights at the Duck Field Research Facility buoy. We track, you know, waves above, I think, eight feet offshore, and then waves above 12 feet, and we see there were about four events where waves got higher than 12 feet at the buoy over the past year, and several more where the waves got higher than eight. This is not abnormal, really, and if I did a wave statistics plot, that's in the report that you have. We did some looking at those, and we just didn't really see anything super specific about the wave climate being noticeably more energetic than last year, a little bit in some ways, but we couldn't really tie that specifically to why there's more erosion this year. We think it's more based on the angles of the waves, that the waves came in at different angles and drove maybe more transport south at different times of the year, but we can't really confirm that completely. It's not an unusually erosive year, it's just more than last year. So maybe I belabored that for a bit too long, but that's what we saw. Tying to, this ties to the waves, so the waves this past year were slightly more energetic than last year, but not much, is what we saw. But if we look at the changes in the volume of sand on the beach itself, this plot is volume above plus 6 feet in ABD 88, and that's pretty much the upper portion of the beach, toe of the dune. And so what you're seeing here is changes in volume in the dune from basically the 2019 nourishment being the green bar, and then changes in 2020, post Dorian actually, is the red bar. Blue is 2020, purple is 2021, and this is light blue is this past summer, 2022. We see in Reach 1, the northern part of the town, there's actually been growth in that dune over that whole time period for 2019, which is consistent with what we see in the profiles. So you've actually gained pretty significantly there. And Reach 2, sort of the middle portion of the town, a gain since the 2019 nourishment up through last summer, a little bit of loss over the last year, but not much. And then Reach 3 and Reach 3 north and Reach 3 south, same trend, some gain up until last year and a little bit of loss, not nearly as much volume in those dunes. You'll notice these are absolute, so there's a lot more volume in the dunes in the northern part of the town, and less volume in the dunes in the southern part of the town, till you get to Reach 4 where there's very little volume comparatively in the dunes in the southern part of the town, which, not hopping ahead, but that is something that the master plan design process, it has been addressing in parallel. So this picture of the relative volume in the dunes will probably change over time as we implement the master plan design in the future. Losing my mouse capability. There we go. The other important trend here is in the Reach 3 south and Reach 4, there's actually a net loss in the dune volume compared to the post, compared to what was placed in 2019. So 2019 August, immediately after the nourishment, there was more volume in the dunes than there is now, and a lot of that loss was due to Hurricane Dorian, and some of it is just due to change over time afterwards. I should, I didn't say this, all these plots are from a survey in July 2022 before the recent nourishment project. So we don't have this level of data all the way out offshore post the nourishment project. So we do know that a lot of volume has been added back, that these numbers reflect what was there just before that. So the actual experience on the beach now is much more sand than we see in these plots right now. If we do the same sort of plot above mean high water, so what you can visibly see on any given day from the beach above the shoreline, we see the green bar again, 2019, the same dates. In all of the reaches, there was more sand on the beach right after the nourishment project than there is now at above the shoreline, and that is in large part due to Hurricane Dorian. You see the large drop in volume between the green and the red that was due to Hurricane Dorian, and was the reason for the funding for the recent nourishment projects past summer. Since then, though, through last summer, it was fairly stable in Reach 1 and Reach 2, some additional loss in Reach 3 and Reach 4, as you'd expect, those areas do erode more quickly historically than Reach 1 and Reach 2. And then over the past year, all of those, you see the purple dropping down to the lighter blue indicates erosion in all the reaches. Probably the most dramatic erosion was in Reach 3 north. Interestingly enough, and again, we tried to find some reasons, we may find some with more modeling of the master plan, we'll see, we didn't really see much erosion in Reach 4 over the last year above mean high water, so that was nice. Some sands moving around, I think, within the reaches to cover that. Let's see, what else? Above, last of these plots, I think, above minus 19 being the depth of closure where we really expect sand to be moving more, not really moving that much outside of that minus 19 contour, further offshore than that, a different trend. So in Reach 1, the northern part of the town, between the 2019 nourishment and post and Dorian, you lost sand, but since then, that reach has gained sand overall in the full profile, that part of the profile that you just can't see, it's underwater, you might experience if you're surfing or waiting, but out to minus 19, there's actually more sand in the profile in Reach 1 than there was right after your nourishment. And the same is true in Reach 2. There's been some erosion over the last year, but still more sand there than you had right after the nourishment. And then in Reach 3 and Reach 4, there's been a loss, but not that much loss compared to right after Hurricane Dorian. So, and remember, this is right before the nourishment project, so that's a pretty nice position to be in, in that you had that sand in the profile somewhere, it had migrated around, and then the upper part of the beach itself was restored through the post hurricane damage funding. So you've got, I think, I don't have a picture of it on screen or a volume change, but I think you've got a very healthy beach right now after having completed that nourishment project, and you're back to really solid conditions going into the next several years. Oh, I was wrong. There is one more. This says about the same thing that I just said, so I'm just going to hop through this. It's just another way to look at the data. And I'm going to go through this as well. It basically shows that the cumulative volume change by elevation, over the last year, it has been a net loss up through July 2022, but still a pretty good position to be in, especially just after your nourishment project in the summer. Which, I guess I'll just pause for questions, since I'll now transition to the nourishment project itself. Are there any questions on the survey monitoring report?
Good body.
All right. Cool. So speaking specifically about the nourishment project that was completed in August, it started in July, Great Lakes dredging dock completed it rather quickly, on schedule or possibly slightly before what they had originally scheduled. The sand color as it came out, we came down, I came down once, my colleagues came down a few other times, and the sand looked very, very similar to the sand that was on the beach before they pumped the new sand out. So the sand color was very nice, the sand texture is good, the size seems to be good. It seems to be doing very well. Not a lot to say about that, is that it did seem to go very well and faster. I'll get to the schedule in a moment. The things that are pending, it's not totally complete. The nourishment is done, but the sand fence and planting are pending. The planting was pushed forward, was pushed off in time to coincide with the sand fence placement, and we're still waiting for permits from the agencies to do the sand fence placement. There was conversations on the original permit application, there's some revisions done to that sand fence design. We submitted a revised permit application a week or two ago, and are starting to get some feedback from the agencies now. So I'll talk a little more about that in a moment. The construction schedule, this is a slide I showed you all back in June, I think, and it's the same schedule that we had, basically, we anticipated the schedule before Great Lakes started working. The one change to it is I made a flip here, the Ellis Island, the larger hopper dredge actually came first. They came in late July or early August, I think. They freed up from another job semi-nearby, and were able to start placing large amounts of sand in the profile in Reaches 3 and 4. They completed their work, and then the Dodge Island came in and finished the job in late August, and then Great Lakes had spent time in September demobilizing. So all in all, it was on schedule or slightly ahead, and like I said, it worked out well as far as the sand quality on the beach. The key things about the project, just to remind everyone of the statistics, the pay volume for Great Lakes, what they got paid for was placing 614,106 cubic yards at a cost of just over 11 point, well, just under 11.3 million, which was the expected amount. FEMA funded 507,000 cubic yards of that, and that was the expected amount that FEMA had agreed to cover. The Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Grant from the state funded another 85,076 cubic yards, and then there's a few more cubic yards that the town funded. We did, and this is expected as well, we did adjust, we had the original design of where to place the sand in the profile, and that profile varies along the beach to get a uniform, a workable beach design that's equitable with sand distribution. We did change that profile three times during the one and a half to two months of fill placement. That is expected as the dredge is working and conditions on the beach are changing and waves roll in and change the beach relative to what they surveyed ahead of time. We see how the volume placement is going, we see how the profile is working out, and then our engineers make some revisions to keep Great Lakes on track to place the target volume, not to place less and not to place too much more, to get the most value out of the project. And so coastal engineers in Raleigh spent a lot of time looking at survey data as it came in daily from Great Lakes and then adjusting the profile if necessary, and that project process went very smoothly, I think. So to break down the payment volume, I said the pay volume was 614,000 cubic yards. The original award volume was 611,000 cubic yards, so Great Lakes placed a little bit more than was originally awarded, and it was all within the pay template, and it's a good amount of sand for the town. I will say, too, this is the pay volume, the survey showed there was actually a bit more volume actually placed, but it was slightly outside the pay template, and that is also usually expected on projects of this size. So you've actually got more than 614,000 yards additional at the end of the day. And you can see, this is in the report, I think, but it's also here how the sand was broken down. A lot, you see the bigger numbers in Reach 3 south and Reach 4 in the south part of the town, required a lot more sand in the profile to achieve the restoration of pre-hurricane conditions, and required less sand in the profile in the northern part of the town to achieve the same restoration of the pre-hurricane conditions, and that, again, was as expected and designed. Here we go. That gets us to the remaining items for the beach nourishment project, which is the sand fence and the planting. Like I said, we updated the drawings for the sand fence based on working with the town, having some nice drone images supplied by the town that helped us make the case for where sand fence could and should be placed to try to talk to the agencies about that. We submitted a formal revised permit application on October 20th, and it's not on here because it was late breaking news, but I believe the, well, no, that's about the master plan. We have had a meeting with the agencies, we got some feedback the last couple of days from DCM that they're still waiting for comments from the Fish and Wildlife Groups. They know that it's time sensitive, and they're working that as quickly as they can. So we expect some feedback in the next week or two. We are coordinating with Great Lakes on the contracting time to either issue instructions based on expected permit response or to extend the contract if needed to get the sand fence and dune plants placed. So if, I'll stop there. That was the post Dorian nourishment. Are there any questions about the nourishment project or comments on that?
No.
Okay, good. So, and I apologize for the title of the slide, it really should be Beach Master Plan Update. So now we're hopping into the overall multi-decadal beach nourishment master plan. A lot of the work going on right now or over the past several months on that has been around an exploration of the Barrow area. If you remember from earlier talks, we were able to get geotechnical investigations done in the green part of the Barrow site. This yellow shaded area is the Barrow areas that you have been using for nourishment for the last several rounds. The green area is to the north of that and is a much larger area, and then the purple to the bottom is an additional expanded area that we're exploring for the, you know, 50-year nourishment plan, planning and concept. So the green indicate vibro cores that were taken last summer 2021 before the, sort of the weather got too difficult and the inlet got too difficult for the survey company to work. They completed those, they analyzed them, we have those results, and it looks like there's some really good sand in there. We did find an area, we sort of found the edge of the good sand in that this shaded area is not looking promising for beach nourishment sand, but so now we know where the bounds are. And this past summer, they went out and our subconsultant, M-Drell, went out and took vibro cores in this purple dotted area, and they collected all those cores and are analyzing those in the lab now. I bring this up and I show a few, so 558 here, 432, which is in the Barrow area that came from this past summer's sand placement. So this is the sand at 432 that you would have on your beach now. It's what you saw coming out of the dredge pipe this summer, and we'll compare that in color to the northern sand and the sand from the southern area that's being analyzed in the lab now. So doing that, this is, doesn't show up that great on screen, actually. The colors are a lot nicer on a, in PDF, but this is the color sand that, it's more browder and more golden, really, in the image, that was placed on the beach this past summer. And we see that if we compare the sand that is being analyzed now for the other parts of the Barrow area, it's a little darker, but not much, and so I think the color of that sand is going to work out well. We know that the gradation of that sand is good from the lab tests that have already been done. We know the depth to sand. Some of this stuff is not beach quality sand necessarily, but so we know above that where we have limits on the volume of sand that we could actually use for nourishment and get permitted. And if we go through the other remaining bits of the Barrow area, the colors seem to be fairly uniform or at least consistent, so we think there's good sand. All in all, the state All in all, the statement is, there's a good amount of sand, and there's also good agreement between vibrocores and the sub-bottom profiling that gets down under the surface sand layer to look at, you know, lenses of sand or if there's any other kinds of objects or layers down there. So that's a long way of saying, we think we've got a really good supply of sand for the beach nourishment master plan. We'll be able to have numbers on that over the next two or three months as all the lab tests come back and then we compile those results into spreadsheets and calculations and things. I just thought this was interesting. So part of the field investigations that we have to do for, mainly for historical and archaeological cultural resources clearance, is sub-bottom profiling with seismic instruments and then magnetometers. And so this shows the vibrocore here and a vibrocore here where physical sand was actually taken and sampled, and the sub-bottom profiler shows that the actual sand layer, losing the mouse, I've lost the mouse. Okay. Well, the blue line is where the sub-bottom profiler says there's a reasonable reservoir of sand to, so again, we feel we've got a really good quantity of sand, and all of the different kinds of investigations are indicating that. Trying to get through to the next slide, and I cannot. So, there we go. The last couple of things about the master plan is, we haven't talked much about this, but we have started the environmental process. We've been reviewing previous EIS documents and other environmental documents so that we can prepare for formal agency scoping. We do have a date on the calendar for the agency scoping meeting, it's November 23rd. I believe most of the agencies have accepted that, we're still tracking because it is Thanksgiving week as well. So we're looking for that day, if not that day, somewhere around there to really scope out the EIS process with the agencies, which will let us move ahead on some of those documents and analyses. Next slide, please. Thank you. Right. The last thing I have is schedule, and the text is too small for the screen, but it indicates the sort of field investigations are the red bars at the top, our engineering work to create the engineering report for the beach nourishment master plan are the blue bars, and then the environmental studies in EIS are the green bars. All of them are slightly extended out into the future, they're somewhat delayed from what we had originally proposed because of the delay in the geotechnical field investigations from last summer. Basically, inlet conditions and weather conditions prevented us completing those by the end of the summer season before the fall weather kicked in. So with those being completed this summer, we now have a good idea what the schedule will be. We're probably only four months or so, three to four months delayed from the original schedule. The environmental studies might be able to pick that up, but they might not. But we should, on the whole, be able to complete the engineering report by June 2023, so by the middle of next summer, which puts us in a good position to keep the environmental studies going forward. So that is an overall quick summary of the beach nourishment master plan progress. Some more detailed discussions, I think we'll need to be working with David and his staff over the next two or three months to answer some key questions and maybe come up with a next update to the board. And with that, I think my presentation is concluded. I'm happy to take any questions.
The board may have questions. I have a question, I think probably more for David on a related, topic related to your presentation. When do we anticipate selecting a contractor for sand fencing and then installing sand fencing?
As part of this project, Great Lakes had sand fencing under their scope. And so, as Brian had noted in his presentation, we've been working with the agencies. I think we've requested a response by the end of this week. And so with that, the subcontractor that's working for Great Lakes, who's currently working down in Buxton and Avon, hopefully can jump up here and do that work without any interruption. So we're trying to coordinate that all to make sure that we've got continuous flow.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Board members, any questions?
Hey, David, I know you're doing the study all the way down to the inlet. Have you had, no, not David, sorry. Have you had talks with the Park Service? Do they have any plans of doing anything on their end of the world?
We have not, or I have not. I mean, there's been some conversation in the larger countywide towns coordinating that hasn't been super intense lately in terms of those conversations. I think there's been some discussion about that, but we haven't had direct talks with the Park Service about that yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, then. Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it. Sorry you had to wait. Then that will bring us back to our normal order of operations, and we will go to item F2, a public hearing to consider the Town's On-Site Plan for Public Services. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir. Give me a moment. Back to my instructions. So yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider a special use permit site plan review for the Public Services Master Plan upon Lark Avenue. On this matter, again, the board sits as a quasi judicial body, and I will go over the instructions again, so they will be part of the record for this one as well. Whenever the board sits as a quasi judicial body, there's a special process on how the board must adjudicate how the general law applies to a particular situation based on an evidentiary record that's presented during the hearing. Your two key responsibilities are, one, to determine contested facts, and two, to apply the legal standards to the facts. You may apply only the standards already contained in the ordinance. You are not permitted to change or modify those standards during this hearing or as part of your decision in the case. In conducting this hearing, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. The board members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. Questions from the floor will not be permitted except by cross-examination from one of the sworn witnesses once they are recognized to speak. A member must not vote on the application if the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct and substantial financial impact on the member. If such a direct and substantial financial conflict exists, the member should disclose it and ask to be excused from consideration of the matter. If any of the members present have had any contact with anyone prior to this hearing in which the particulars of this application were discussed, or if you have received letters, email messages, phone calls, or other contact from anyone concerning this matter prior to the hearing, you must disclose those communications. You must base your decision on this application entirely on the facts presented during this meeting and disregard the particulars discussed with the applicant or other party. A member must base his or her decision on the evidence presented during the hearing. Any member who has developed a predetermined opinion or bias on the outcome of this application before the hearing must not participate in the decision on this application. So at this time, I ask if any member needs to recuse themselves from this hearing for one of the reasons that I have explained, or if anyone needs to disclose any ex parte communications that they have received prior to this hearing.
I don't think anybody needs to be recused, but, I mean, it's the town and we're the board, so we've obviously had a lot of communications about this.
But I think the board members can all make their decisions based solely on the evidence that's presented under oath and in the hearing today, correct?
Of course.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, so your decision must be based on competent, substantial, and material evidence properly entered into the record of this hearing. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during the hearing, while you may be presented before or during the hearing with copies of uns sworn statements contained in letters, emails, and the like. Such uns sworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence that is presented during this hearing. Unsworn evidence such as letters or emails can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. So at this time, all of those who will be presenting evidence regarding this application, if you will please approach the town clerk so that she may administer the oath.
Do you swear or affirm with testimony that this trip that we took in the [inaudible]?
All right, at this time, we will begin the public hearing and evidentiary presentation on this application, beginning with the town's analysis presented by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. I'll try not to belabor this too much because I think everybody's pretty familiar with it, but this, it is a special use application. Oakley Collier are the consultants that have put this together on behalf of the Town of Nagseth. It consists of the redesign and construction of Town Public Services facilities. It is being developed under a common design scheme, and we're talking about the facilities located at 2110 South Pond Avenue, 2200 and 2208 South Lark Avenue. We do have existing public services facilities here. This is in the C3 district, which is our commercial services district. It's located in, on a property that would have a local elevation standard for its flood zone of nine. All the structures are being proposed at 12 feet or above. The comprehensive land use plan has this property located within an institutional community services area, so the construction of these facilities is compliant with the land use plan. As noted, this is a special use permit, site plan review. Staff does find that the proposal is consistent with all the supplemental regulations. Because this is part, partially located within the Fresh Pond AEC, you've got a chart within your packet that outlines coverages that are allowable based upon the Fresh Pond. And there are portions that are located within the 500 feet, 500 foot AEC of the Fresh Pond. Within this area, impermeable surfaces shouldn't exceed 30% of the lot area. We're at 29%, so we're compliant there. The remainder of the development is beyond the 500 foot AEC Fresh Pond. So impermeable surfaces there cannot exceed 45% of the lot area. It's coming in at 38.7, so it is also compliant. Maximum allowable height for any of these structures is going to be 35 feet, and all these proposed structures, as they're being redesigned, are well below the 35 feet, and you can look at the elevations provided in your package. Architectural design doesn't, isn't required because this is located within the C3. For parking purposes, when you look at the parking requirement and the number of employees that are affiliated with their Public Works Department, 28 parking spaces would be necessary. A total of 50 spaces are proposed, so we're well compliant there. There is covered storage for the oversized vehicles, it's also shown on the site plan. For buffering and landscaping purposes, like we spoke about before, there is a requirement that you have some, a 10-foot wide landscape buffer when you have parking adjacent to right of way, and so this is really the only area where that's occurring. So we have shown our compliant buffer yard there adjacent to Lark Avenue. As we noted, the interior parking lot landscaping is not going to be a requirement in this case. As always, we'll make sure when completed that any new light fixtures on site are compliant with the lighting ordinance, and we'll do a light audit as well. The applicant is currently working with the Dare County Health Department on wastewater approval. I've noted in your packet that the issuance of the authorization to construct has been delayed by the preparation of an easement document to cover the multiple septic components located throughout these sites. Traffic circulation and stormwater management have been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. As always, fire prevention code must be met, and our Public Works Department has approved the site plan as it's proposed. Because this is part of the Fresh Pond AEC, it does require a KAMA major permit, and that is currently in progress, and we won't be issuing any development permits until we have that in place. So that said, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the use standards and the land use plan, and we would recommend approval of the special use site plan as it's been presented. The planning board took a look at this at their September 20th meeting and also voted unanimously to recommend approval of the site plan. So I would say that I'll attempt to answer any questions you have, but David Ryan is the go-to on this, so I'm sure he can answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? If not, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, you want to come see if there's any questions for you? Since Kelly essentially invited that.
Yes, I think Kelly did an excellent job in going ahead and covering a lot of the site characteristics. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have pertaining to any of the building components or any of the other related facilities.
Any questions for Mr. Ryan?
It doesn't appear anything of substance has changed. Are there any minor changes to anything that the board might have seen before that you're aware of?
Very minor in nature. There's a lot of things that have been adjusted on the fly, but as far as the building locations, they pretty much have remained intact. Minor things like relocation of some of the drain field locations in order to maximize tree preservation on site, things like that, but very minor in nature.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan? The manager was also sworn. Are there any questions for Mr. Garman or anything you want to add, Mr. Manager?
You know, it's been a great process, and I really appreciate staff's efforts in getting it to this point, especially David. And so I think it'll end up being everything that our Public Services Department staff have asked for. David has worked really hard to get their feedback, and I think the plans incorporate that, so we're excited to move forward with this.
All right. Does the board wish to receive any other evidence, or do you have any other questions you want to answer before you begin your deliberations? All right. If not, we will conclude the evidentiary presentation on this matter at this time, and the board may begin its deliberations. Again, I will point out that there are certain findings of fact, five findings of fact that the board would need to make in order to adopt this. They are listed at the end of the staff report.
Very good. So I'll ask again, for the purposes of discussion, can we, is there a motion?
A connection to the approval is presented, and also including the five facts determined at the end of the staff report.
All right, very good, thank you. I have a motion. And a second, any discussion? I just want to echo what the manager said. Appreciate all the time that staff has put into this. It's been a good, long process, and I'm very happy to hear that, you know, staff in the department has had input and that a lot of work has been done to make sure that their needs are being met, that they are happy with this plan. That's important. It's got to function for them for a long time to come. And so I just want to express my appreciation to them.
Thank you for saying that, Mayor.
All right. Hearing no other discussion and having a motion on the floor, all of those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Very good. That's a big step. All right. The next item on our agenda is item F3, a public hearing to consider application for a DCM planning grant.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the town's application for a Division of Coastal Management, a Planning and Management Grant. Fortunately, on this matter, the board sits as a legislative body, and therefore sworn testimony is not required, but we will be allowing comment from members of the public on this particular item. But we will begin with this hearing with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by the Finance Officer and Deputy Town Manager, Amy Miller.
Good morning again, our afternoon board, Mayor. So we have already applied for this grant because the due date was ahead of this meeting, but in order to receive this grant, we need to hold a public hearing with board approval. It's a coastal management and planning grant. It is through KAMA. We asked for the maximum amount, which was $25,000. No town funds are being requested, and this would actually defray some local funds that the board has already approved. So it's kind of a win-win situation. So I appreciate your consideration.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Miller on this application? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on this application? Does any member of the public wish to comment on this application? Anything? All right, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the board may begin its deliberations on the proposed application.
All right, then a motion might be in order?
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, again. All right, that brings us to item G, reports and recommendations from the planning board and planning and development director and Director Wyatt.
I'll try to move through this pretty quickly. The first item up there is just a discussion on the planning board and what was discussed at their meeting on October 18th. We had some good conversation about the tree removal and tree preservation ordinances. As this board had indicated as well, the planning board had a strong interest in wanting to see all those regulations that were dispersed throughout the UDO to be compiled into an appendix so that it can be gotten to and read pretty easily. So we'll be working on that at our next meeting. Coming up for the planning board's November 15th meeting, we're going to have a special use site plan review on there for TW's bait and tackle. Essentially, they're, they're adding a small amount of retail, but it necessitates some additional parking. So they're going to be asking for the board to review that in terms of special use review to allow bike racks to offset some required parking. So that's the, the main thing on their agenda. We will have a conversation about a text amendment related to V-zone certification for small construction or, or minor construction located east of NC-12 and 1243, and is their ability to perhaps not require V-zone certification for, for very small work such as replacing stairs or things like that. There was no board of adjustment hearings in October. The decentralized wastewater management plan and the voluntary septic subscription service that came out of that, that working group did have their third meeting on October 27th. It was a really, it was a really good meeting. There was some good conversation there. At a prior meeting, the working group had asked staff to have a conversation with the town attorney about any liability that we might be encumbering by offering a voluntary septic subscription service. And there was some reservation there. The town attorney had felt like accepting money could, could put us in a perceived contractual agreement with someone, and should there be a dissatisfied customer litigation or similar could come out of that, and so perhaps that would be something that we should consider further. I've provided more information in your packet about that, but also after a lot of conversation, it basically came down to perhaps for the time being, we just, we need to work on getting those recommendations of the decentralized wastewater management plan update in motion, have more education and outreach, have our environmental planner Connor Twitty out in the community, really educating people on the program and soliciting more use of the program, and perhaps even getting that on sort of an automated schedule. And, and just put pause on the subscription service for the time being. But with that, all the members of the working group did agree that it would be beneficial to have a, sort of a septic health advisory committee, not to meet monthly, but perhaps quarterly, to just go over the recommendations of the DWMP and where we're at. That would require action by the board, perhaps considering a new charge for the committee and any additional appointments. So should the board be interested in that, we're happy to come back to you at your December 7th meeting with, with more information. Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, staff did have an internal meeting with the consultant Biohabitats on October 25th, and there was just a very preliminary discussion of conceptual designs on, on those three sites that we've previously talked about, the Harvey Track, Soundside Road, and Nagseth Woods Road area. With the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program, our town engineer, David Ryan, has been overseeing a lot of that, and his update for that was that survey work and geotechnical work is currently occurring. There's a, a well driller has placed a transect of subsurface wells in the proximity of Junko Street Beach Access, which will allow the ability to collect groundwater data that will be incorporated into the hydraulic modeling simulations for siding and sizing for the dune infiltration components. Preliminary design is being prepared and reviewed by the design team, and I think we talked earlier about a scoping meeting with all the agencies that are going to be involved with that. No new updates on the EV Action Plan or ETIP at this time. The AIA Activate Technical Assistance Grant, that project is now complete. The Residential Energy and Water Conservation Guide is accessible on the town's website, and we'll make sure we're using that as a resource for folks. The Whalebone Park Phase 1 Planning, staff did hold a public meeting for the Partif Accessibility for Parks Grant on Tuesday, October 25th, here in the boardroom. Then following that, our deputy planning director, Kate Jones, had a meeting with a group of current and former Dare County School physical therapists, exceptional children's teachers, and behavioral specialists regarding the Whalebone Park accessibility. The grant that we're seeking is really rooted in providing accessible play, accessible features, accessible facilities. So it was important to have that meeting with those resources. It was very informative. Staff heard the perspective of those who work daily with children and teens with special needs. So that grant, it has been completed, and it has been mailed to Partif, so the deadline there has been met. And then also to follow up, we were notified that we received $112,000 from the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau TIG grant to construct an accessible restroom. The Dune Management Cost Share Program is sort of the next thing that I wanted to touch base on. You know, that's the, the new program where we're providing grant monies for a portion of sand relocation, sprigging, planting, and fencing. And when I wrote this report, we had 22 people to provide applications for the Dune Management Cost Share Program. As of yesterday, we were at 30. I would not be surprised if we're at 31 or 32 by this point in the day, so that's pretty exciting. And lastly, I did want to mention, it's very exciting for the planning and development department as well as for the town. We were notified of it, that we received a 100% correctness rate in our annual review of our elevation certificates for our CRS system. And I wanted to thank two of our staff members, Kelly Brady and Lily Nieberding, for really taking control and seeing that through. Lastly, our Doughty Park events and Farmer's Market. We do have a meeting coming up, a movie rather, coming up at Doughty Park on Friday, November 4th. We have our holiday markets that are coming up. We have two in November that are on Saturdays. That's going to be Saturday 12th and 26th, and also December 10th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. We have an evening market, which is going to be December 1st, from 4:00 to 7:00. It's exciting. Back in 2013 and years prior, the town had a holiday, a townwide holiday decorating contest. So our committee for art and culture, we have, we're trying to reinvigorate that, so we are going to have another town decorating contest. And so more information will be put out about that on social media. We have a tree lighting ceremony the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and a flashlight candy cane hunt at Doughty Park on December 15th. So a lot of, a lot of fun things going on with arts and culture, and a lot of really exciting things going on in the planning department, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No, I don't have any questions. That's a lot of good news, especially the markets and the grants for Whalebone. That's great, thank you.
Absolutely.
The markets and the Christmas decorating contest, I like the, I like the categories that you have as well, so.
Yeah.
Thank y'all for working on that.
Absolutely. I can pull it up in case there's folks here that are interested, but there is going to be four categories. For the joy of it, so no theme, but just wow. The best beach theme, Griswold Award, and then anything but the house. So sheds, dock houses, whatever. And so that's, that'll be exciting. You can see some of the information up there, but entries should be in by December 9th, and then our art and culture committee will go around on the evening of December 13th and do the judging, and if you're selected, you'll get a recognition sign, recognition here at the board meeting, and then on social media as well. Should be really fun.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Kelly.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Kelly. All right, that brings us to item G2, presentation and discussion of beach concierge services. Chris?
Just real quick, before Chris begins, I just want to let the board know that this is something that I had asked for staff to bring forward to you. Chris had been working all summer with some of the beach concierge services on compliance issues, and we had had quite a few of those this summer. Obviously, we've got a number of different vendors operating in the town, and they're all doing business their chosen way. Some are, are being more compliant than others, and we certainly did observe a lot of different behaviors this summer. We wanted to come back to the board and give you an overview of our, our observations and how that sort of compares with our current rules, and maybe suggest that we get back together with some of these vendors and discuss our observations, maybe see if they have any suggestions on, on how to improve compliance, and then see if there's any need to, to adjust any of the rules. But that, that's essentially what we're looking at offering to you today.
All right, thank you. Thank you, welcome, Chris.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
It does feel like evening, you're right.
All right, so as town manager spoke, I'm going over beach concierge service today and how it pertains to the beach equipment concierge service regulations, also section 8.8 of the code ordinance for unattended and unsafe equipment, personnel, property, and debris on the beach are prohibited, and also maybe some of the sections of the UDO for onsite rental of beach chairs and umbrellas. I hope you all got to look through the packet that I gave you if you wanted to get kind of familiar with some of the codes that I just mentioned. I broke down, let's see here, broke down into like four categories, my most common complaints for the beach concierge. I don't, I didn't plan for this to be a negative meeting, but I got to be more of the complaint department, you know, this year. And as you know, this is the first year that I've done code enforcement, so I can only speak onto what I've seen this year. I don't really have a history of seeing what's gone over the last few years and the code as I read it now without any historical past to it. Oversaturation on the beach was a most common concern that I have received in my office. Go-seating is, I don't know who coined this term, but everybody that calls and complains seems to use the word go-seating, and that's where beach chairs, you know, 12 beach chairs go empty for a full entire day, that's from a beach concierge service. Overnight storage, and also signage. So I'm going to start out here with our oversaturation and being too close. There's a couple scenes here. So the ones with the orange canopies, these are all about two or three feet apart, and as you can see, there's five of them in a row. They also added another blue one to it. In the code, this isn't allowed. Canopies need to be 10 feet apart. This causes issue for ocean rescue, life safety, for seeing the coastline and seeing the beach. For the orange one, I did confront them about this issue. There were some arguments over they can't help what the customer does once the canopies are on the beach. I did keep up the discussion, he did go out and move them 10 feet apart. The blue ones are actually in compliance, and this is off of a beach access where there's probably four to the south and three to the north. So if you're going out to the beach, one of the complaints from the citizens are, you know, you've got to be 50 feet away, you've got four here, you've got four there, you're now 300 feet of linear space, so now you have to travel, you know, down the beach to find a spot. Nothing I can enforce that follows the code. It was just a common complaint that I wanted to address with you. Is there any questions with this part so far with over, oversaturation or being too close? So going into the next issue was the second largest is the go-seating. When you have large concentration of beach canopies and beach chairs that stay empty, let's say they set them up at 7:00 a.m. and nobody goes out there till 3:00 p.m. Well, in the perception of the public, these have been out there all day, and it's a, it's a spot that they can't use, so people get a little upset that they're there and, you know, they couldn't find a spot that day, especially on days when we have a high tide throughout most of the day, or higher tide. The, the beach gets really skinny, so there's not a lot of options of people coming onto the beach. Is there any questions with that part of it? All right. And for the code, this is where some clarity would come in to help. As you read there, it says generally no beach equipment should be placed on the beach unless it was, be used that day. Generally and should are not things I can easily enforce. Shall is more the language that I need to enforce the code. And then that second line, beach equipment shall be only set up upon order or request of the customer each day. Where this comes problematic is, is it being set, you know, if they're getting a week-long subscription to this service, it's just being put out for five days, what if they don't use it for three days? That's kind of presetting, that kind of goes against the code of not presetting it up for each day. So that's something in the code we might need to look at to clarify. Overnight and day storage, I've received a lot of complaints about this. I did address it with the beach concierge services as a group. So what you have here is beach chairs and umbrellas and canopies. Some are bike locked to the sand fencing. Some are being covered up with a tarp and just roped off and left on the beach. Some are abandoned underneath certain houses that are on the beach. This is not allowed in the code because it says you're not allowed to keep equipment on the beach. However, in the UDO section for onsite, it says you're not allowed to keep equipment east of the vegetation line, which is a little bit more clear. When I did address this with the beach concierge services, a couple of them did rebut that this is private property and I can't enforce them not having it on the dunes. I told them that public perception might, you know, argue with that. Signage, I really only had one major complaint with signage this year. This is a sign that I did write violations for. They're allowed to have 144 square inches of signage, which would be their name that's there to the left. So, so this would be their, their signage. They wanted to argue that this was not signage, their phone number, Instagram. They wanted to argue that this was not signage, their phone number, Instagram, and Facebook. And then also this, they wanted to argue was not signage, that that was just a pattern that's on the top of the canopy, which is, was on all four corners. I was unable to agree that that was not logo or signage. One thing that did, I did agree with, or not agree with, accepted, was the logos that they have on these chairs, if you look at it as in a square footprint, it's bigger than 144 square inches, but he said that, and brought me documentation, that his printer, it displaces 144 square inches. The ink on the paper or the ink on the background is 144 square inches and not a, you know, 12 by 12. The logo doesn't fit in a 12 by 12, it fits more like in a 24 by 24, but since the logo is 144 square inches by pattern, I did allow it for how I could interpret the code at this time. So my suggestions to the board is to give direction and a little bit more clarity to the ordinances, how they're written. Comparing the UDO with the code of ordinance for the different sections, to write them to either support current activities or clarify prohibited activities. Consider a saturation limit based on linear feet of oceanfront. You know, for example, three canopies per 100 linear feet on the beach, east of the vegetation static line. So if you had three canopies that are 12 feet, that's 36 and 10 feet, you're looking at 56 feet out of 100 feet that a business could occupy. That's just a suggestion or a route to look at as we look at is saturation. I did hear a gentleman speak earlier about the beach canopies and umbrellas, and canopies are the new umbrellas. Well, that is very much true, so the square footage on the beach gets eaten up very quickly as more of these become popular. And it is very popular and there seems to be a very big demand for it. Clarify section 12, 226, which is the one, the section that's directly for beach concierge service, specifically section seven, where we had the problematic language of should and generally, to be a little bit more clear. And we plan on having code enforcement and various staff to conduct a meeting with beach concierge services, post this meeting of your comments to kind of get direction for the next season coming up. All right, I thank you, and moving on to our comments, questions?
Just, just one question, because it's something I think I see fairly often. And you presented a line of multiple canopies together. Very frequently, though, you will see maybe two together, and they may have been set up by a family, you know, because you, you're occupying one of those houses, you probably have a group that needs two, two of them, and it feels, I think, unnatural for a family group like that with two tents to put them 10 feet apart. How frequently did you see that?
For private citizens opposed to commercial?
Or eat both?
Well, anytime I saw it with the commercial end of it, I would give them a call and say, hey, or email, or I'd email a general to every beach concierge service saying, hey, here's the code, they need to be 10 feet apart. I've only addressed that a handful of times over the summer. I did not address it with the general public, but I did see it quite a few times with the general public.
Okay. All right, thank you.
With the general public, did you ever see more than two of them together, like three or four tied together?
Um, I have. If I saw like three, I would talk to them and, you know, have them move them apart. I generally wouldn't stop for just two together.
Yeah.
But if I started seeing clusters of three and four, I explained to them that the issues that ocean rescue has for seeing the beach and seeing the water and what problems it may cause.
I know of beach masters from, I work with the town, and I know Farm Dog. What other concierge service businesses are there?
Uh, there's Go Dog Go. I think they mostly contract as some of the onsite, Ocean Atlantic Rentals. There's a couple, a few other ones I see sporadically, not enough to memorize their names, but I think we only have about eight beach concierge services in town. But Go Dog, or Beach Masters and Farm Dog are the two largest. And I mean, it, it seems like there's a lot of demand for it, so they are growing bigger and bigger, just from what I've seen this summer. So I wanted to get a handle on it, and like I said, as the code's written, you can't preset up the canopies, but we're allowing them to go out at seven, and like I said, if no one goes that day, that's a violation, but are we going to allow it to keep going that way? Or I'd like to have an open discussion for options, and I'd like to talk to the beach concierge services to see what they could offer.
You just mentioned on two occasions, the way I understood it, they both appear to be beach masters, that it seems to be a, a kind of a back and forth whenever you call or ask them to do something, is that, is that the case?
It was not my intention to call out any single.
Well, no, I just, I noticed.
Yeah, it's, it's a common theme with that company, whether, you know, I spoke with ocean rescue, and they've had a few issues with cordialness with asking them to move equipments. One other complaint that I've received from citizens, mostly directed towards that company, but a couple other times, and I did address it, was visitors that set up on the beach, and I kind of, I guess they get used to setting up in the same spot. The concierge services, they'll set right up on somebody else's site, you know, three feet away from them. And that causes, generates a complaint from the community.
Considering that we have eight, possibly eight businesses in town, the fact that we had one that's located in the town of Naxhead, I think it speaks volumes of them of wanting to be involved and, and be a good neighbor with the town, a good business for the town.
Yes, it does.
I'll leave my comments there for right now.
Okay.
I would agree with Commissioner. He'd been active even when this came about, a couple of years back, put his input in, helped direct it to where it is today, so I'm sure he'd be more than happy to help tighten it up.
Yeah, we do have, so it seems like there are, there are two categories of things here. We have existing rules that we're not talking about undoing, because we seem to have sort of settled on a set of rules that are working, but you needed, you need clarified language that is easier to enforce and that is consistent. Like, you described, and I appreciate what you did with that company, we have a standard way of measuring signs, and it's usually to draw a square around it and figure out what that area is. And so, as much as I appreciate, again, what you did, we, we do need, it sounds like we need clarity in the ordinance so that you don't have to do that. I mean, you shouldn't have to do that, you should be able to look at the ordinance and say, this is exactly how I do this. So we have that category of things where we really need to clean the language up, and I, I see that. The other category is, is new regulation, and, yeah, personally, I'd, I'd be inclined to be really careful, I mean, not careful, that's the wrong word. I'm not inclined for, to new regulation until we've sort of cleaned up the language for stuff that we are doing. I mean, and figure out, you know, if you've got a saturation issue, what exactly is that? And, and, and what are, how should that be treated? And how many is too many? And that whole discussion. So I don't, I don't know how the, the rest of the board feels about that issue, but Commissioner Sanders.
I think we, we have a pretty good ordinance. Like the officer said, we just don't have some, there's too many gray areas.
Right.
For some of that. Doesn't give him his right to totally enforce it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the Town Manager had a good idea of getting these companies back together again and looking at, I mean, I'd be interested in hearing about maybe some solutions to go seating and, and oversaturation, like you're talking about, like, and cleaning up the ordinance on those, for sure.
We've got time to do that, there's no.
We, we do, we do.
Why don't we involve them in the discussion?
Yes.
Maybe they will participate much like Farm Dog did.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, certainly, and just continue that, that dialogue with them. Do we need to do anything more formal in terms of direction on this?
I think we'll just take back these concerns and meet with them and see what ideas they might have.
Okay.
And like, for instance, the go seating, the saturation issue might be solved if we could solve the go seating issue. It's probably not an easy issue to solve, and that's where we really need help from the vendors, but, you know, when we, when we look at this type of service, you know, it, it does offer a service to people that come here.
Yeah.
But obviously, if every rental home in the town offered this as part of your rental agreement, you know, you get this service, and then all of a sudden, okay, well, every single rental home in town, I know this is an exaggeration, you know, gets a setup on the beach somewhere.
Right.
Well, that's thousands of setups. What would the beach look like if that were the case? Now, I know, again, that's an exaggeration.
Right.
But, you know, so it would be much better if people were able to have the equipment set up when they wanted to use it and not leave it there when they're not using it. And, and this is a very difficult problem for them to solve, but it's just something that we'd like to explore with them on different ideas.
It, it is. You know, we're, we're not involving renters, we're, we're involving the concierge companies. And, yeah, I'd be careful about putting a problem on them that, you know, if I've rented a beach house and the service comes by and sets up at seven, and my wife tells me at eight, we're going fishing for the day, guess what we're doing? We're going fishing for the day. And, and the expectation that that company has to come back and pick that stuff up because I'm not going to use it, that's not their fault. And it wasn't because I didn't expect to use it. And so I think we just, you know, just have to keep hold that the stuff they have to deal with.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, there, right now, there's a restriction on how soon, how early in the morning they can set it up. And so, you know, I know there's, I've had some conversations with some of you about, you know, what should, what should the beach look like when people go out to watch the sunrise? You know? What's too early?
Right.
But on the other hand, I know that if, if some of these vendors were given the opportunity to set up earlier, they would, because they have a lot to take care of in a short period of time. So is there some give and take there with the go seating versus that? I mean, these are the things that I'd just like to have a conversation with them about.
Sure.
And if I could speak to that right there, I had it in my notes, but didn't bring it up. One person I did talk to that owns a property that's on the beach, he said when he goes on his morning walks that he notices that at 6:30 in the morning, people are coming out throwing their canopy on the ground and then going back to bed, because they know that the beach concierge sets up at seven, and they won't be able to find a spot, so they're, it's kind of like the running of the bulls, they put their stuff down and they go back. So when you come out to the beach, it's, you know, they, the, the community or the visitors are starting to follow the lead of the beach concierge of, hey, let's set it up so we have it for later.
Right, yes.
One of the things that we don't have, and I'm thankful for this, but it did happen one time last summer, was we had an area in town where we saw 15 or 20 chairs with umbrellas all set up, and they were just sitting there, and it was being rented to whoever wanted to walk up and pay the money. And that's, that's clearly not allowed, and, and so that's where you become like Hawaii or, you know, Waikiki, where everything is completely occupied with rentals that people didn't go pay for. And, and so that's, we want the beach to be open and unencumbered for the people that come and use it, so.
Really appreciate your, your work out there. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of acceptance of coastal villas subdivision.
I'm here today to present a consideration of acceptance of improvements for coastal villas subdivision. Quivell and Associates on behalf of Naxhead Construction and Development has submitted their final plat for coastal villas subdivision. That's a 17 lot major subdivision that did receive their preliminary plat approval back on August 5th of 2020. As part of that, they have offered dedication of improvements for review and approval by the Board of Commissioners. Those improvements include the West Coastal Way roadway. It has been constructed to town standards and been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. The Mariners Way waterline extension, and we do have the DEQ approval letter for that. And they have installed their fire hydrants, and that's been approved as well. Section 4.24.61 of the UDO talks about performance guarantees, and it essentially states that a subdivider or developer can provide a performance guarantee in the amount of the reasonably estimated cost of completion for those elements that have not yet been completed. So the developer has submitted a performance bond in the form of a cashier's check made payable to the town of Naxhead for the completion of vegetated ground cover established for stabilization purposes in the amount of $25,488. Also for the installation of streetlights by Dominion, and that's for $23,577. I will say, and it's in your packet, the developer has already paid Dominion for the installation, but there's no timeline on when that will occur. So we did ask for that performance bond to be in place. So as I said, the preliminary plat for coastal villas was approved on August 5th, 2020, and the UDO outlines the procedures for plat approval. It states that the UDO administrator shall determine whether or not the final plat substantially agrees with the approved preliminary plat. If the final plat substantially agrees with the preliminary plat, the UDO administrator shall approve the final plat after the Board of Commissioners has accepted the publicly dedicated improvements or accepted the performance bond. As the UDO administrator, I have found that the final plat does substantially agree with the preliminary plat, and I do recommend that the board accept these improvements as made and identified on the ASBIL, titled ASBIL survey for coastal villas that was prepared by Quivell and Associates, and in addition, would ask that Coastal Way be officially accepted into the town's street system and included on the Powellville map. You do have a copy of the final plat, the ASBIL plat, the restrict, the draft restrictive covenants, which will need to be recorded, and also as part of your packet was resolution for dedication. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board, any questions? No. All right. I don't see any, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which case?
Read the resolution, or can I just make a motion?
I think, John, we don't need to read the resolution, do we?
No, sir. Just adopt it, just a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as presented.
All right. Thank you. A motion in a second to adopt as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. That brings us to item H1, any committee reports. Start on this side.
I was going to say the tourism board gave the town the money for the bathrooms that Kelly did already. So that's it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Commissioner, bring it.
Nothing from Jeanette's peer and Planning Director Wyatt gave the update on the accepting service, description, so we're at with that.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, Sam, the Planning Director gave the update on the coastal management plan. We are expecting to hear some news back by the end of this year, so it should be good.
All right, very good. Just, it's not real a committee. I attended the Governor's Offshore Wind Energy Task Force meeting yesterday in Morehead City. It was a great meeting. We had a contingent of about 12 folks from England who are active in building and servicing, especially the ports folks and the people who service that industry, about what all those business. about what all those business opportunities are like and what their lessons learned were. It was a really, really interesting, interesting discussion with them. We already dealt with H2. So the next item on our agenda is H3, a request from Dominion Energy for an easement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Board. Good to see everyone again. For those that don't remember, I'm Samuel Sorpy. I'm a right-of-way specialist with Pike Engineering, and we contract for Dominion Energy under the Strategic Underground Program here in North Carolina, which is a reliability program that offers free underground installation for outage-prone customers in Dominion's customer base. If you'll remember, back in May, we actually presented an easement on a property out on Old Naxhead Woods Road that was owned by the town. It was a large land parcel. Essentially, we just needed easement to get from one side to the next of the project itself. And we actually are returning for additional easement on that proper, on that project. Unfortunately, we ran into some issues with the nature conservancy. They had a good piece of the project that we needed easement on. Unfortunately, we spent about seven months going back and forth with their legal department, and they had some constraints that they needed, which would negate our ingress/egress rights to the property, which were pretty much, we're dead in the water there. So what we are hoping to propose today is to utilize the town's right-of-way. You guys maintain that right-of-way on Old Naxhead Woods Road. Essentially, what we are looking, is there a way that we can get the? Oh, yeah. No, it's okay. Thank you. If you can get the easement, yes, lovely. Thank you. Scroll all the way down. Keep or go?
Yeah.
Oop, too much. Too much. Little bit more. Can we go up just a hair? There we go. Oop, too much. Technology is wonderful. There we go, okay. So you'll notice at the top of that page, parcel for 2042 Old Naxhead Woods Road, we've already secured easement. We actually have secured easement on all customers for this project that are getting the direct benefit from this, this program. Everyone's very excited about that. You'll notice, once we hit that corner of that parcel, we're proposing to redesign our route to enter into the right-of-way, proceeding on the right side of the road itself. And then, actually, towards the end of that parcel is where we meet with the parcel that was approved by you all in May. So essentially, we're just asking for an extension of the easement itself. Although we'll be on the road, there's, it's going to be pretty much the same as the easement prior. No equipment's going to be put on. We're going to be using directional boring to drill the line itself, so no trenching. There'll be minimal pitting, so holes dug. But any of that will be restored at the end of construction. And also, with regards to traffic, there will be a traffic control plan instituted so that the roadway itself will still be able to facilitate traffic to and from, so anyone living further down the road will not have to be trapped while construction is occurring. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have dates of the construction?
So unfortunately, no. Dominion, actually, all, we actually just got an update that pretty much all power companies, co-ops, and Duke, Dominion, everything, are experiencing major supply chain issues with regards to equipment, like transformers, pedestals, switch cabinets, and the like, which kind of pushes the construction back some, say, six to eight months. However, the, the thing that is most important is getting these projects designed and easements secured so that we can get them in the backlog. So once the supply chain issue is resolved, we can just rock and roll as soon as we have it available. But typically, once a project, which, if this easement is secured today, we will be able to close this, this project and send it to Dominion to be put in the construction backlog. So once we get this easement, we'll be able to. But with this program, typically, once a project is submitted to Dominion on the professional services side, it's anywhere from six to seven months that construction actually begins.
Mr. Sanders.
No questions.
Very good. Hearing no further questions, then an approval of the, a motion to approve the request would be in order.
Set moved.
Setted.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request for the easement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is H4, Old Naxhead Cove Traffic Control Measure Request.
Can you open up the memo? And? Can you scroll out a little bit? There we go. Minimize it a little bit. Thank you.
You can go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. Back in May, we had received an email request from, representative from the Old Naxhead Cove Homeowners Association with several requests. That included requests for pedestrian connectivity via sidewalk connections within the neighborhood, as well as speed limit reduction, and also the addition of some stop signs. And up here on the screen, I've got the location of the stop signs within the neighborhood. There was a request for a three-way intersection here at Finn Lane and South Cobia Way. And then over here, along West San Piper Terrace, at the intersection with Sound San Piper, South San Piper Court. And so the request was to install stop signs at those locations in order to reduce the vehicle speeds seen within the neighborhood. Now, on a personal note, I want to say that sometimes my first introduction to a lot of issues within Westside neighborhoods are via construction. And I was really amazed to see the amount of traffic within this portion of the neighborhood. And some of the traffic counts showed, you know, up to 24,000 vehicle trips, and that's approaching and departing within a forty-day period in the July-August timeframe. So there is a lot of traffic within this neighborhood. And with the layout of this neighborhood, you can see along South Cobia Way, you have a long straight stretch right here from the intersection with Old Cove Road. And then you have this curve where it transitions into West San Piper Terrace. That is also another straight stretch. So naturally, people will want to go ahead and pick up speed because there are no obstacles or barriers in the way. And, and so what we had done was, I had gotten with the police department, and we had located a couple of the mobile radar trailers out there during different time periods. That's notated by this yellow pushpin. There was one that was located here along South Cobia Way that was in the late April, early May timeframe. And then subsequently, there was another location right here near South San Piper Court, and that was located in late July, early August timeframe. And the data collected from those, from those units is included in your board packet. And what we found was the eighty-fifth percentile of speed was right around 25 and a half to 25.9 miles per hour for those two units over those two time periods. Now, if, if you recall, the board went ahead and posted a Westside Neighborhood Speed Limit Reduction, which, when we do a comparison with these, with the data collected from these two units, we had one that took place before the speed limit reduction, and one took place after the, after the speed limit reduction. And we really didn't see any discernible change within the speeds. We're only talking a half mile per hour or less for that eighty-fifth percentile. And the eighty-fifth percentile is basically eighty-five percent of those trafficals, of those vehicles that ride along those roadways. And so we didn't really see any discernible difference. And so we, we thought that we could look at something else that we currently have as a capacity in the town. And that was the radar speed limit signs that we recently installed at both West Soundside Road and also Gray Eagle Street, and wanted to see what their effectiveness was as far as speed limit reduction. And so we did a little pilot study over a three-day period. And with these signs, they're able to go ahead and collect traffic data. And you have the option of going ahead and turning off the digital display and still collect data. So you can actually see the difference between that digital display and readout as compared to when it's turned off. And over that three-day time period, we were able to see that when that display was turned off, that you were seeing more people speeding. And, and so you could, you could gauge that prior to, and then do a comparison between display on versus display off, that that display on really does affect driver behavior. And so in, in reviewing this, we thought that this might be an opportunity that in lieu of stop signs, which according to DOT are not used to control speed limits, they are used to assign right-of-way, that maybe they would not be an appropriate measure here. That we have another capability that we've had within town. We're able to collect data, and from that, we can go ahead and see different trends, and we can see their effectiveness. And, and so with this request, in lieu of the stop sign, staff is requesting the purchase of four radar speed limit signs. There would be two that would be located on South Cobia Way. And I've got locations, approximate locations shown here along South Cobia Way to go ahead and get both northbound and southbound traffic. And then again, on West San Piper Terrace, there would be one here, and I think there's one cut off over here. Right here, in lieu of the stop signs. And, and what we would do is we would be able to go ahead and collect data via this cloud-based system in order to be able to see their effectiveness. And also, these don't have to be a permanent measure. We, we locate them on four-by-four posts that we could go ahead and use those here for a determined amount of time. And then if we have issues within the other neighborhoods, we could go ahead and locate it within those neighborhoods as needed. And, and so this request is for the purchase of four speed limit radar signs at a cost of $2,800. And if the board goes along with staff recommendation, there would be a budget amendment in the amount of $11,200 for this request. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, David. I'm going to defer to the resident of that neighborhood.
Well, I was going to ask you if it was all right if Mr. Carroll spoke. He probably walks more miles in that neighborhood than anybody.
Thank you. Yes, and I'm also a member of the.
You gotta go over there.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I'm also a member of the Old Naxhead Cove Homeowners Association Board. And so this has been a vigorous discussion. Pro and con, we are a democratic body, so people have their various opinions. I will add that, as, as, as Commissioner said, I walk every day in that area. I have been for the last five years. And it has given me a chance to both know my neighborhood as well as the traffic patterns. People do speed through there. Speaking as an individual, because I walk a dog, I know that because you have these straightaway stretches where there isn't a lot of light, people do tend to pick up speed. I won't say that I'm aggressive, but I do try to make myself known so that people, when I'm walking, especially at night, because I have a weird schedule, I try to make myself known. But we have a lot more children that have moved into the neighborhood as well. We went through about a decade where there weren't a lot of young children, but there are a lot of young children out there as well. And when I was out walking Halloween night, I was amazed, astounded, how many kids were out, which is nice to see. But it also made it crystal clear that speed controls are necessary for the neighborhood. I know that there has been mixed feelings about how, what that speed should be, be it 20 or 25. I tend to be in the group that agrees with the 20 miles per hour. I'm also probably more inclined to agree with the signs versus the radar. Question that came up with the board was, of course, will there be any kind of citation component of those radar systems that will cite people for speeding? What kind of enforcement, or is it just a data collection only? That are some of the questions that have come up as well amongst the board. But I do believe that, it is an old neighborhood, it's been here for a long time. I do believe that the sidewalk is an improvement, and that it takes some of that traffic off the road. It's very narrow. We still have traffic issues of people parking on the road, which makes it an obstruction. But I think that having some controls in place that will slow people down will definitely be to the advantage of the community. But I know that there are concerns as to whether or not, what kind of enforcement will be used against people who may not adhere to the new speeds.
Thank you.
Andy, there's no way to enforce any speed? And there's no law that can force speed off of a radar, right?
You have to have, radar itself is not sufficient to allow for the prosecution of a speeding violation. You have to have testimony from somebody who personally observed the vehicle to corroborate. The radar is given to corroborate their opinion of speed, but you have to have some live testimony who's observed the movement of the vehicle.
I think what David was suggesting is down where we put the signs near Wellbone Junction, we have the ability to turn off the display but still collect the speeds. And so we tested that, and when we turned off the display, the compliance diminished. So when the display is working, the compliance is much better. So it did seem to be an effective tool for controlling speeds without having to be there with our police 24/7. You know, on Soundside Road, we did the signs and the speed cushions.
And, and with this system, no, it's, it's not an enforcement mechanism, but it does collect enough data that we can start seeing trends. And so if there needs to be a step up with enforcement, you know, we can start looking at those trends and use this as a tool to gauge, hey, this is an opportunity for us to go ahead and support, you know, some of the actions that we're seeing from the signs.
These signs are just regular pole-mounted, wood pole-mounted signs?
That is correct, yes. We can mount those on a four-by-four post. They're easily moved.
Yeah, well, that was going to be, my question was if we put them there and observe, and they're not the solution there, we can use the sign somewhere else.
That is, that is correct.
As, as a thought. So, I mean, the inclination, I mean, a suggestion might be we, we take this approach, monitor the performance of the drivers in there, listen to the folks in the neighborhood who are out there observing, and then reconsider, you know, whether some other measure is necessary.
The signs would be a good supplement to our existing radar trailers to be able to move around. And we do get requests for the radar trailers. And sometimes in more locations than we have available, this would supplement that. We could, we could use it in a lot of different areas.
I appreciate Mr. Carroll for coming and, and talking and giving us his insight. Based on the recommendation, I'd say that we'll, we'll start there and evaluate to see if we need to go, go further and see what, what the stats show.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, yes, thank you for that recommendation, and it, and it looks like we're, we're all on board with that. And so we, we would get the signs and install them and, and see how that goes.
Motion to approve the budget amendment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right. That brings us to item J1, which is discussion of the Rogawa Museum and the Jacke's Ridge State Park in consideration of a resolution. And I'm going to ask for input from, from those of you. I unfortunately missed that. I unfortunately missed that meeting, and so, am not party to all of the discussion that occurred there and the, and the thoughts of the board. So, I apologize for that, but I'll just open it up to ask any thoughts that the, that the board members have.
After rereading the letter that we sent out, we respectfully requested more time based on the comments that we had received, which were those comments that everybody took personal, but that was what we received. And we provided this letter so that this letter would allow us additional time before any decision was made. My personal feeling is the room is grayer today than it was then. I understand where you're coming from, I understand where you're coming from. It's my personal opinion, not the board's opinion. The most communication probably between the four of you or the two groups were right here during our, our break today, and at some point, there can be a resolution of that. I would like to have more information brought back, the facts agreed upon by both parties. And if we do a resolution, it's not against what you see in the packet, the Regala Museum, because we're not at all against, I'm not all against that, but more along what Friends of Jockey Ridge is stating, and that no construction be put on the, on the ridge. But that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Brinkley.
I want to thank the people that came and spoke today. I've known John Harris personally for over 35 years. I've known him as a, as a businessperson within the town and have always enjoyed our working relationship. I do not know Ms. Allen as, as that long, but I know her to be a businessperson in our community, and I've always heard positive things about her, held her in high regard. So, anything that came from the comments or the letters that diminished, Mr. Weaver talked about the integrity of the board members of the Regala Foundation, I apologize on, and that's coming from me. To say that, I don't know Bruce, but I know Mr. Harris very well, and I know of you. So, hearing, hearing that, that's, I, I don't, y'all have great reputations in this community, and the fact that if we diminish that at all, I apologize for that. My personal feeling, again, this is, this is just me, it's nothing against the Regalos. This is not me against the Regalos. My philosophy is having a private museum in the park, I'm against that. I'm not against the telling of the stories. I've learned more about the Regalos in the last three weeks than I've ever known.
Right.
And you would think, growing up here and going to school here, maybe it would have been taught.
Right.
Some does. I don't recall that.
No.
But based on the presentation by the, by the Regala Foundation, the gentleman that's writing the book, I know he wasn't here, but he gave a great deal of information, and then learning stuff online.
Right.
It, I mean, it's a story that needs to be told.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders.
It is a story that needs to be told, and I have a great respect for the Regala Foundation and, and what they're trying to do with the museum. I'm not sure where we go from here.
Right.
I mean, I guess that's something we need to talk about.
Well, I will say, yeah, based on Commissioner Sears' comments, and I, you know, I was sort of along that line of thinking as, as well. The resolution that we have in our packet is, I don't think the resolution that we want today. And so, I think for one, I think that we could, we could table that, which would give us an opportunity for, to, to hear additional information and decide, get a little clarity about the direction and what it is exactly we want to communicate to everybody in the community about. It really needs to be, what is the town's position with regard to Jockeys Ridge State Park? What, what do we think is appropriate as a town, as a board, to be appropriate in the park? And we need to have some discussion about that. We have a retreat coming up, that would be a good time. That's a philosophical discussion that I think is really appropriate for that kind of thing, so we can give it a little thought, give the whole thing a little bit of a cooling-off period, and then come back with a resolution that really makes the statement that we want to make.
I agree. Talking, I know I went outside to talk to Mr. Carroll and Mr. Carroll about another subject, but I know you talked about the communication that occurred. You know, I would like to hear, you know, maybe at some point, can we communicate together about this and work together towards a common, common cause?
Yep. So, John, without modifying the, the resolution, could we, can we table, is it appropriate to table the resolution? And I would probably do it to our next regular meeting and try to act on it at the retreat.
I think, I think tabling it is entirely appropriate.
Okay. So, I think a motion to table that to the December meeting for further consideration would, might be the right thing to do.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion then?
I think that gives a chance for everybody to go through the due process.
Okay, right. Very well. Hearing no further discussion, and all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. And thanks to all of you who were here today to talk about this important topic. Next item on our agenda is J2, Discussion of Short-Term Rental Registration. I'm sorry, I blew right past the items from the town attorney, but John, I assume you know I am piling all those together for the end after everything's dealt.
And that would be, that would be efficient, I think.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, Andy, are you leading this discussion?
Yes. We talked about this with the board briefly previously. This is something that we learned recently that our town attorney, John Leidy, brought to our attention. The town, as you know, has a short-term rental registration program that mainly applies to the short-term rentals that are not managed by licensed real estate brokers under the North Carolina Vacation Rental Act. And we have learned that a court case in Wilmington has now sort of decided that registration programs are not, no longer considered valid in the state based on this court case. Does not mean that you can't regulate short-term rentals, that there are certain aspects of short-term rentals that you can regulate, but you just can't do it through a registration program. And so, we would propose to go back and take a look at our regulations with the planning board and see what it is we want to try to retain, and obviously, remove anything that wouldn't be considered valid, and, and then circle back with the board of commissioners after we've had a chance to do that. And so, that's essentially what we would propose, and we just wanted to get some direction from you in, in a meeting about this, and let everybody know what's going on.
All right, thank you. John, do you have anything to add to that?
I think that's a good approach.
Okay, all right. Commissioners? All right. So, agreed. All right, thank you, Andy. We look forward to how the planning board wants to tackle that. Then that brings us to item J3, the Update on the Community Care Clinic Lease.
This is just a quick heads up on that. You know, the board authorized a letter of consent earlier in the year to essentially allow the Community Care Clinic of Dare County to apply for a federal grant to build a dental clinic within the existing facility. And so, the board authorized that, and at the time, the, the assumption would be that they would need a five-year extension on their lease in order to be able to use the grant funds. So, now that they've been awarded the money, which we've, we've learned, they have come back to us and said that they needed an amendment to the letter of consent because the, the five-year timeframe would be from the end of their performance period for the grant, which would actually take it until 2030. So, given the fact that it's almost 2023, it would be about a seven-year lease instead of a five-year lease. And so, in order to do that, we would need to amend the letter of consent. We would also need to actually approve the lease, and as, according to John, we need to go ahead and, and advertise that the board would be considering a lease for that period of time, and we would expect to bring that back to you in December. And essentially, we would propose the lease be until 2030 to meet the timeframe for their grant. So, you would be approving a resolution to amend the lease at that time. And so, that's just a heads up. I've talked several times with the Community Care Clinic staff, and they're already to move forward with their renovations. I think they've completed most of their due diligence. And given the fact that our current lease expires at the end of this calendar year, we, we need to go ahead and act on this in December. So, that's just a heads up on what we expect. We'd certainly welcome any feedback from the board, but with no other feedback, we would plan to do that for you in December.
Does that ring any alarm bells for anybody, board members? Okay, all right, good, thank you, Andy. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That brings us to the board of commissioners' agenda. I'll start down here. Commissioner Sanders, do you have anything for us today?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
In the spirit of time, I'll, I'll sign up.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sears.
Same with--
All right, very good. All right, thank you all. It has been a long day. Under the mayor's agenda is the Request for Closed Session, which we'll lump together here. We also have Consider, Consideration of a Resolution in Support for Election Workers. I talked about this meeting or two ago. I was wrong about my dates. I thought that the election, I had the election this week or before this meeting. There's been quite a bit of conversation between the mayors about this, air desire, and, and the towns have all done this in different ways in terms of stating their, their support for, for election workers. The county actually adopted a resolution to declare November 7th Election Hero Day. That being done, it didn't feel like we needed to declare that again, but simply to iterate our support for the election workers, those folks who are our neighbors, and recognize the declaration of that day. So, that's the purpose of this resolution. And seeing that, I'm not going to read it in the interest of time, but we will put it out. I think it would be appropriate to put this out so that the election workers can see it if the board decides to approve it, adopt it.
Need a motion?
You do need a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much for that. And so, that will bring us to Closed Session for Employee of the Year and any items for consideration by each one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like someone to make a motion to enter closed session as allowed by General Statute 143-318.11A3 in order to consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, including the Cherry Inc. litigation, and also, as allowed by 143-318.11A2, in order to consider the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year candidates and finalists.
Very good. I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session.
.........................................................................................................................................................